Good afternoon. I will call to order the September 18th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Gagnon, Magrino, Slack, Lukey Pierre, Vreeland, and Rockwell. This time, I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices and we can move on with our agenda. Our first item for consideration today is to approve the actions from the August 28th meeting. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve those actions?
All right.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
All right.
And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to sort the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be considered on consent, and those that will be withdrawn or continued. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item number one is a vacation, an alley vacation in the vicinity of Garfield Avenue South. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put item one on consent. Item two is also an alley vacation in the vicinity of Chicago Avenue. We'll continue that item to the October 16th meeting. So if anyone is here for item two, it'll be considered on October 16th. Item three is at 1500 Nicollet, 11 West 15th Street, 1500, 1510, 1518, 1538, and 1544 Nicollet Avenue. That is a plat. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? See, no one will put that on consent. Item four is an Islamic center at 2824 13th Avenue South. Those applications have been withdrawn, so if anyone is here for that, we'll be accepting the withdrawal of those applications. Item five is 38th Street Station Phase One at 3752 Hiawatha Avenue, 2922 and 2924 East 38th Street, and 3733 through 3805 28th Avenue South. Several applications for a new planned unit development there. We'll discuss item five. Is anyone here to speak on item five other than the applicant? So we do have a few people here for item five. Also note that there is a floor area ratio variance that was not listed on the agenda. It was noticed and is referenced in the staff report, so we'll be considering that as well. Item six is the 3100 Lake Street Apartments at 3100 West Lake Street. Several applications for a new residential building there. We'll discuss item six. And just so I have a sense, how many of you are here to speak on item six? So there are a few of you here, and I might suggest to, we would discuss item six before we would discuss item five, since there are a few people here for that. Item seven is the Target Field Station Mixed Use Project at 505 6th Avenue North. Several applications for a new commercial building there. That application will be continued to the October 2nd meeting, so we'll consider that on October 2nd. Item eight is a zoning code text amendment related to telecommunications antennas. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item eight? See, no one will put item eight on consent. Oh, we do have someone. I should note too, and we can certainly discuss the item, it's come to my attention that there have been a version of that text amendment that related to burial of the base equipment, and I understand that was removed. So if that was what you were concerned about, that's not part of this version, but we can certainly discuss it if you had other things you'd like to discuss, so.
I have some staff that's involved. Staff.
Okay. Okay, okay. If that's the case, we can just consider that item on consent then. All right. So item eight will be on consent. Item nine, also a zoning code text amendment related to off-premise signs, and we'll discuss item nine. Finally, item 10, also a zoning code text amendment that relates to exterior building materials, and we will discuss item 10. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, three, and eight will be on consent. We'll discuss items five, six, nine, and 10. Item four has been withdrawn. Item two will be continued to October 16th, and item seven will be continued to the October 2nd meeting. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All in favor.
All right.
And that motion carries. Next, we can move on to our Committee of the Whole consent agenda, and Vice President Slack, could you give us an update?
Thank you, President Brown. At the August 30th, 2017 Committee of the Whole, we heard three items. The first was a land sale at 314 36th Avenue North and 1610 Oak Park Avenue North. The second was a land sale at 4238 Fremont Avenue North, and then the third was a land sale at 3431 Colfax Avenue North. The recommended motion for each of the three items was to approve the staff recommendation that the, each item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. And I will take that as a motion to find those items consistent with the Conference of Plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
All right.
And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to accept the withdrawal of item four? We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
All right.
And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item two to the October 16th meeting? We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
All right.
And finally, may I have a motion to continue item seven to the October 2nd meeting? We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
All right.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That's items one, three, and eight. Again, is anyone wishing to speak on items one, three, or eight? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. May I have Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, before the meeting, Commissioner Rockwell had asked a series of questions to staff on item number one, so I just, perhaps Commissioner Rockwell would want to chime in, or staff about those questions, which were related to the overall goal of having a pedestrian space that was continuous along the eastern portion of where 29th Street would have normally gone across, and making sure that this motion or movement today doesn't preclude us in the future from realizing that vision.
Mr. Wittemer.
Commissioners, one thing that makes this situation a little difficult and different than the projects we had to the east, the two blocks to the east, was that we had redevelopment projects on both of those blocks that allowed us to negotiate east-west connections from those streets as called for in the small area plan. In this case, we don't have a redevelopment proposal and probably would not have the ability to require an east-west connection in exchange for vacating a north-south alley. Hopefully, in the future, we will have a willing property owner if and when there is a redevelopment of the property, but it is correct to be cautious about a situation where we would be vacating at least the north tip of this alley if we think that we would ever be seeking public access across that in the future.
To speak to that as well, since I was the one that brought this up. You know, I think that this raises a question for me on, a little bit on how the city operates. My question was, you know, if these were two private entities, I wasn't suggesting that we could require a swap, but if these were two private entities, we would be, we could explore a negotiated land swap. And I think that this is the kind of instance where we should be doing that. We're adding steps to a bureaucratic process, and, you know, we're giving up land which we could be swapping for other land, which we know we want to try to negotiate for in the future, but we're giving up land of equal square footage right now, which seems a little circular. So, you know, I guess I would ask staff to think creatively on how we think about these alley vacations, because we give them away, and there's often value there beyond the, you know, the $200 administrative fee.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wondered if, is there a time sensitivity to acting on this today, or might we postpone it one cycle so that we have time to work with the property owner who I know is here, and I know has been working kind of toward this vision, so I imagine is supportive, but I just want to make sure again that we don't take action today without sort of considering this long-term vision for the community.
All right. Ms. DeVorak.
Commissioners, we are not subject to a 61/20 day clock on right-of-way vacations, but as was discussed, you know, there is no mechanism for us to trade land for land that is being vacated, and there is no redevelopment of the property. And portions have, when the conversation started, the portion of land, the northernmost piece of this alley is actually going to be divided between lands owned by Hennepin County and the property owner, because they do own the northernmost portion of land, and the northernmost 10 feet is actually down in the trench, and so, you know, negotiating for a pedestrian crossing today between the two streets would not be viable, given the slope and the Matung Greenway property line.
But ultimately, you are correct that we are not under strict time consideration here with this.
All right. So Commissioner Bender, are you, or is anyone else wishing to remove this item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull this item, and I'd like to move to postpone it.
All right. So we have motion to, I think we can maybe take care of all that in one motion, to remove item one from the consent agenda and postpone it, or continue it to October 2nd. We have a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Commissioner Rockwell.
I just want to briefly say, you know, I hesitated pulling this from consent, because I think the use and the alley vacation request are reasonable, and so I think that my intent in seconding this is, is that we just talk about what this land is going forward, long term, and figure out how to best accomplish that, but that I would support the idea.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just echoing, I also don't anticipate there being any issues, but, you know, we've had so many instances in the past where the city has given up land that's ours, and I think before we do that, we should make sure any questions are answered, because we can't get it back, or when we do, it's very difficult. And so, just before we take that action, I want to make sure all of the questions are answered. Thanks.
All right. If there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to remove item one from the consent agenda and continue it to October 2nd. All in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? We have one opposed. What is that? Seven in favor, so that motion carries. So we can move back to our public hearing that has been opened for the items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on now items three or eight? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. Our first item for discussion will be item six, 3100 West Lake Street. And, let's see here. Staff is Ms. DeVorak.
I will be brief, because I believe staff was proposing to put this on consent, actually, but I know there are members of the public that want to speak tonight, so I will just give a very quick overview of the project. This has been Committee of the Whole in the past, and so this is the 3100 West Lakes Apartments Project. This is currently a planned unit development that was created back in 2005 with proposed, at that time, 163-unit residential building, and then maintaining the existing office building, that today is proposed to be demolished, and then the applicant is proposing to construct a 200-unit residential building. And the current site plan, or the proposed site plan, I should say, is, and I apologize, this is slightly grainy, this is that existing 163-unit residential building, and then this is the proposed 200-unit building. It would be up towards West Lake Street on the south end of the property, and the property does have this access road, or this access, sorry, excuse me, out to the street, and so all, all traffic coming into and out of the site for both buildings will come in off of Lake Street, and they can exit to Lake Street, or then exit to, and then the name of the street is Dean Perkway, excuse me. And so they're proposing to demolish the office building and then construct an eight-story residential building on the site. The applications, it's a conditional use permit to amend, or modify the existing planned unit development and site plan review. They are meeting all standards of site plan review, and there is no alternative compliance being requested. For the planned unit development application, they are requesting alternatives to the maximum height. This is located in the Shoreland Overlay District, so it is subject to the two and a half stories, or 35 feet. And they have requested reductions in the dimensions of yards between the two buildings on the north end, and then on the front yard, property line, line, excuse me, along West Lake Street, for a total of 15 points is what they're required. The points that they're proposing then, or the amenities that they're proposing then to meet those, that 15-point requirement is the underground parking, a reflective roof, the pet exercise area, and then the recycling storage area, and they do meet all of those standards, and we are recommending approval of that application. I will conclude there unless there are any specific questions from staff.
All right. Are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and is there anything the applicant would like to add? And if, yeah, if so, come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to present our design for the 3100 Lake Street Apartment Project tonight. My name is Jeff Dawson. I represent the project's development team. We're excited to be here and look forward to your comments and feedback this evening. As you know, our team has been working for well over a year with Sydney, Councilmember Goodman, our adjacent neighbors, and the city's planning staff to get to this hearing. With that in mind, I'd like to briefly summarize the extensive neighborhood outreach process that we completed this year to make this new apartment project a reality. Since early 2016, our team has hosted at least a dozen design review meetings with Sydney, Sydney's Land Use Committee, and representatives from the adjacent HOA boards. We've held multiple meetings with Councilmember Goodman, two neighborhood open houses, a meeting with Sydney's Board, and finally, a meeting with your Committee of the Whole back in April. As you can tell from this list, our neighborhood outreach effort has been comprehensive and extremely thorough. Needless to say, it has been a long road to get here, but we're extremely pleased with the final results. Over a period of three months this spring, we also focused our engagement efforts on meetings with representatives of the Loop and Lake Point Homeowners Associations to better understand their concerns about our future demolition and construction processes. We toured their building, discussed alternatives, and finally agreed to a number of specific construction methods that would address their concerns about construction-generated vibration, noise, and traffic. A few months ago, at the end of that process, and with their encouragement, we drafted a letter of intent outlining how we would manage the project's construction processes. Unfortunately, in July, the Loop HOA Board voted to dismiss our jointly crafted LOI. Nevertheless, we remain committed to working collaboratively with the Loop HOA and the rest of our neighbors. We still intend to complete the construction of our new building as proposed in that letter of intent. Ultimately, the goal of our neighborhood engagement effort was to collect feedback from stakeholders to help us craft the final building's form and site plan. During the design process, we explored a number of options for shorter buildings that spread out across more of the site, and alternatively, we looked at taller building forms that had smaller footprints but greater visual impacts on our neighbors. Finally, after following Councilmember Goodman's recommendations, we reached the best possible design solution, the proposal in front of you tonight. We're very pleased that Sydney's Board, city staff, and your Committee of the Whole agree with us as well. We are confident this new building will be a positive addition to the neighborhood, and we want to reiterate, we are committed to working with our neighbors as a project moves forward and plan to use the best possible construction processes for everyone involved. We appreciate staff's detailed presentation of our proposal and the comments we received from the Committee of the Whole in mid-April. We've developed the site and landscape plans extensively since then, and have our landscape architect, Jesse Simon-Kawitz from Damon Farber, our civil engineer, Tricia C. from Kimley Horn, and our traffic engineer, Ed Terhar from Wink, here to help answer any additional questions you may have this evening. Finally, we also have Erin Roseth and Gretchen Camp from ESG here tonight to answer your questions about the business building design. Thank you for reviewing our project this evening, and we look forward to your questions and comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicants? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. I know we have at least a few people here who'd like to speak on this item, so you can kind of decide among yourselves who would like to go first and come to the microphone and state your, yeah, go right ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Leo Zabizinski, live at 3116 West Lake Street, Loop Calhoun. I serve on the Board of the Loop Calhoun, also sat on the Sydney Land Use and Development Committee for the course of the past year or so. The purpose for the Loop Calhoun really getting engaged with this project was primarily because of damage that happened from the foundry, Trammell Crowe Project at 3118 West Lake Street. Our building sustained about $1.8 million worth of damage, damage that the parties, we've been in litigation, but damage that the parties have accepted responsibility for due to vibratory construction methods. Our opposition to the project is documented in letters that we submitted with the Sydney resolutions at the end, both a letter to Sydney and also a letter to the Brickstone Group. I just want to say that I think Brickstone did make a very good effort to work with the community. There's a lot of different stakeholders, just adjacent property owners, and Sydney as a whole, both high-density condo owners, single-family homeowners, a commercial corridor, so I don't think their job was easy. That being said, our concerns and our opposition is not with the design of the project. I think the design of the project, which I know is primarily the issue that this committee oversees, type-one construction could actually be a very positive thing for the neighborhood. Our issue is with the potential for more damage to happen on the eastern part of our property. The negotiation and our involvement with Brickstone was to seek a construction agreement with formal commitments for non-vibratory construction methods, and monitoring during construction, and also specific conditions for what would happen if the Loop building was damaged, what they would do during the construction, whether they would stop, revisit their projects similar to what Trammell Crowe did, and also obviously provide the Loop with some sort of mechanism for financial compensation if they were to damage her building. Unfortunately, we were not able to reach an agreement between the two of us. You know, that being said, I do think that the best thing that can happen is Brickstone builds a project that doesn't damage the Loop. We certainly, I think, do share an interest to not wanting to engage in further litigation. We don't want our building to be damaged. We don't want to sue them. I don't think that they want to be sued, but as it currently stands, unfortunately, we don't have anything that really gives our homeowners, 122 homeowners, the comfort that what happened with Trammell Crowe won't happen again. I think that the commitments that the group, that the Brickstone Group has made were well-intentioned. That being said, they're informal, a letter of intent. There were a lot of conditions in there, things that could change, you know, certainly things that could change with their design, with their construction, with financing, and those are the kinds of things that just, again, at the end of the day, we couldn't accept. So with that, we just put our opposition on the record.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, my name is Bob Corrick. I'm Chair of the Sydney Land Use Committee. I reside at 2816 West Lake of the Alps Parkway. Sydney has voted not to oppose this project. The design, we've been, we were pretty pleased with the design in the end. We worked quite closely with the developer for many months, probably more meetings than Jeff even alluded to. There were, there were many meetings with the Land Use Committee over many months, and so we thank them for that involvement. And so we are pleased with the design. We, a lot of the concerns that Sydney had and interests we had in putting, getting good side yard with the Loop, getting, getting the heights down, getting a type-one construction, those were all obtained. Our non-opposition, however, was conditioned on, on two items that we were quite concerned about, and one of them relates to what Leo was speaking of, which is an effort to, by the developer, to have construction methods that would not cause damage. And as, as Jeff has referred to, we were able to work with the developer to come to some agreement on, on construction methods such as layback of the dirt and helical drilling methods that, while not legally binding obligation by the developer, they certainly, it seems that the intent here is, is quite, quite focused, and the developer does not want to cause any damage to the Loop. However, it is not a contractual agreement, and that was the Loop's problem, and I totally, the, and Sydney totally understands that issue. So, one of our conditions was that reasonable construction methods be used, and we're putting, we're putting our trust in the developer's hands, and I think that we would like to have this as a matter of record in this approval, should you go forward, that, that we're counting on the developer to use construction methods that will not damage their neighbors. The second concern we had was tech, was traffic during construction, and we were, this is a very busy area, as you probably all know, 40,000 cars a day, and we did not want any lanes closed unnecessarily. In fact, it would be, we felt that it would, it should be extremely unusual to have lane closures, and developer also has agreed on an intent basis to, to conduct all of its construction on the site and to have lane closure only for extraordinary circumstances such as utilities and that sort of thing, and improvements. So that too, we would like to have as a matter of record here, that we are also putting our trust in the developer to go forward with this type of plan. So, the other thing that I wanted to talk about briefly today was, was, maybe it's a policy issue. You'll note that our concerns, our true concerns, are not part of this formal submission. Now, we did, we did certainly submit our resolution with that information in it, and that was attached, and you can read it, but we were told many times by lawyers and staff and others that it is not the purview of the Planning Commission or the city to be getting into, getting into these, these two issues too heavily. And I think that, that considering the, the city's effort to develop density in the, in the area, we've had, this is the fifth project in, in about 12 years. We've worked collaboratively with all of the developers. It's, this, this kind of density has impact on the neighborhood, and it has it in terms of, as you've seen, potential damage during construction, and it also has impact in terms of construction activity and traffic. And it seems that the city process and the city ordinance does not give the neighborhoods a lot, very much voice in this, on the, on these kinds of issues. And so, I think that we would, we would like you to hear that. We've, we've been very collaborative with developers. Certainly, you've sought our solutions, and we've Certainly, you've sought our solutions, and we've been successful in getting many things that we want, including lower height, all that sort of things with our developers. But these issues we bring up of traffic during construction and construction methods do not seem to be addressed real well in the process. And here's, this is the only public hearing, for example, that we have, even though we're told that these issues are not relevant to you. So we would like to have our voice heard on that. And the other point I'd like to make on that is, is the question of submissions of these projects. Brickstone put a lot of effort in with us on many meetings, but the final proposal, you know, the developer does not have, is not required, the process does not require the developer to give us, give Sydney a formal look at, the Sydney Board a formal look at it. And in this case, even though we had many meetings, the actual final proposal was not approved by Sydney, the Sydney Board until after the deal was submitted. And so to me, that's another hole in the process, where we should have a structure so that before the project is submitted, the local neighborhood board has the opportunity to take its position. We did take a position, but it was after it was submitted. So thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Daniel Rosen, 80 South A Street, Minneapolis. I'm a lawyer for the Loop Calhoun Homeowners Association, and as you heard, Mr. Zabizinski doesn't actually need a lawyer to speak for him, and I'm here just to put a finer point on, on one particular issue. And as you heard from the Sydney representative here, what our concern really is, is that where you have a lack of binding commitment, you have a lack of commitment at all. And where you have a party, and I remember, we're talking about very, very minimum commitments that, that demonstrate neighborliness, minimum commitments that demonstrate that you're prepared to do those things that ought to then get you the type of consideration that you're looking for in return. And to the extent that this developer is coming forth before the commission and asking for anything to which they may not actually be entitled, we want the commission to be aware that a lack of certain commitments of not binding yourself not to do damage to your neighbor, you know, these are things that we think ought to be minimum considerations that this commission and ultimately the city council after you will have in mind, and we would encourage you to examine more deeply whether or not the demonstrations and the statements of desire to be working with neighbors are actually really being met by the minimum indicator, and to us, the minimum indicator is binding themselves. And we entrust those considerations to the commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Item Six? Yeah, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Wilson. I live at 3439 St. Louis Avenue in the Cedar Isles Dean neighborhood. I am a member of the Sydney Board. I've also served on the Sydney Land Use and Development Committee with Bob Corrick. I think this is the fourth project that I've been a part of the committee to consider. And I'd like to make a few comments about this process, which has been pretty arduous. It has gone on for a year, and as Bob said, Bob Corrick said, there have been more meetings, I think, probably than Mr. Dawson indicated. We've put a lot of work in on this, as have the architects and the developers. It's been an interesting process. One of the things that I've done has been a good deal of research on this particular site, 3100 West Lake Street, and to the two buildings that have stood on this site before, starting with a mansion built in 1907 by a lawyer who served 13 years on the school board, among other things, and the current building, which is there, which was built in 1953. There's a cornerstone in that building with a metal box inside which contains historical documents, according to the Star Tribune. The developer has agreed to host a cornerstone opening party when it gets to that point, so we'll see what was considered historically relevant in 1953. The developer also wants to include history of the site in this building when it is built. There certainly is an issue of traffic along West Lake Street, which is not part of this particular process, but Bob Corrick mentioned it in terms of the density that we are seeing, and there certainly is more density to come in this particular area. These are county roads. This is not within the city purview. I want to give particular thanks to Councilmember Goodman, who finally said that we have to do something about the intersection just to the east of this project, and got turn signals installed at the intersection of West Lake Street and Dean Parkway. That has helped somewhat, but we have an issue with increasing traffic along West Lake Street, which is the county's issue, and I hope the county steps up to the plate and does something about it at some point. I'd like to give a particular, excuse me, particular thanks to Commissioner Vreeland, who has been really, has spoken forcefully about the Shoreland Overlay Ordinance, which came about, of course, in 1988. We had a project that came before the committee on the whole of this board about eight months ago, and Commissioner Vreeland spoke strongly in support of enforcing the Shoreland Overlay Ordinance requirements or guidelines on this particular project. This particular project also, as you heard before, is within the Shoreland Overlay District. There have been other projects that have been built since the district was created, and obviously, this does not meet those requirements. However, looking at the project in context with the ones next to it, the one behind it, it seems to meet a pleasing ensemble. It's taken us a lot of work to get here, and I hope that it can be approved by this board, even though it does exceed those guidelines. The other project that I talked about, when that comes back before the board, that's a different issue, and we'll speak to it in a different way. So I think it's going to be an attractive project. It's been quite an experience as a citizen to be on the Land Use and Development Committee. You hear from Land Use and Development Committee Chairs from all over the city, all 72 or 78 neighborhoods that have land use committees. So I may be wrong, but in my view, I think Mr. Corrick sets the standard for professional, proactive chairmanship, chairship of a land use committee. I've learned a great deal, and I think we have a project that is going to fit well into the neighborhood, and I hope it will win your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on Item Six? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have two applications for us, one for the conditional use permit for the planned unit development, and second, the site plan review. Commissioner Vreeland.
Yes, I would like to speak. I would like to speak about the Shoreland Overlay District, and this is a building that does have some context with its neighbors and other tall buildings. But I really want to remind folks that the Shoreland Overlay District is an important piece of our city being as great as it is, and it was the protection of our lakes from really tall buildings that would be built to the edge of the lakes. And the concept was that a canopy tree, a 35-foot tall canopy tree, would give you the illusion that you're actually in a lake in, surrounded by trees, where you weren't immediately pressed up against a building visually. So the visual context of our lakes and this great public resource of having the organization that I represent, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, have so much protected shoreline of our lakes and river is really important to this city's history and future. And I'm disappointed that the projects that this is next to and in context with weren't further away and shorter. And I will be voting against this, and I urge my Commissioners to consider the Shoreland Overlay District as something that is important and meaningful, and if it's something that you are convinced that there are mitigating circumstances, that those be really critically spelled out and not just overlooked because there is a development that is popular or a good-looking building that folks want. I've supported increased density. I've supported the work of this Planning Commission. I think it's important to look at the overlay districts because they really, they do have some meaning. And I just wanted to be on the record for that, and I wanted to thank Mr. Wilson for the setup for this speech, but this is a lot taller than 35 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I would move to adopt staff recommendations. A, A and A in my agenda, but the CUP for Planned Use Development and the Site Plan Review for a 200-unit residential building.
Right, we have a motion to approve--
With the stated conditions.
Approve Items AMB with the stated conditions. That's both the conditional use permit and site plan review. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell.
I'll just respond briefly to Commissioner Vreeland's comments. We've had this discussion on this lake before, you know, I think the Shoreland Overlay District is, is an important part of the city and an important part of the state, and it's a state, it's a state district. You know, we are an urban city, and I think we, we want those places in the city where we can get some repose, and we also want to embrace our urbanness. And Lake Calhoun, to me, like parts of the downtown Minneapolis Riverfront, or like the area around Loring Park, and yes, the pond in Loring Park triggers the Shoreland Overlay District. It is a, it's an urban place. You know, I lived in Brooklyn for a long time, and I go to the beach at Lake Calhoun because it reminds me of Coney Island. So it's a mishmash of people. It's an urban place. It's a place to be out and people watching in the city. And so since Commissioner Vreeland called for very specific reasons to overlook the Shoreland Overlay or make an exception to the Shoreland Overlay District in this case, I wanted to take him up on that offer and make that statement.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? I'll just touch on, I know, obviously, the residents of the neighboring building have raised some concerns about kind of construction behavior, construction methods, and I think that is something important to consider as we consider our zoning-related approvals. That's not really something we can necessarily condition an approval on, so I certainly encourage that conversation to continue, but at least for today's actions, we're not really able to do anything specifically related to that. So if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye. Lipke here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
No.
So that's five to one.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item Six. Our next item for discussion is Item Five. Staff is Ms. Smith, 38th Street Station.
The applicant is the Lander Group, and the property, the properties are listed before you hear. It's located at the intersection of Hiawatha and East 38th Street, right adjacent to the light rail transit station, 38th Street Station. The existing zoning classifications for the property are the C1, R4, and R5 districts. So the entire site does occupy a portion of a block, and also, there's one parcel to the south of 38th Street that would be included in the entire site for the planned unit development. The entire site is also located in the PO pedestrian-oriented overlay district, and the applicant is proposing to rezone the site to the C3A zoning district. The applicant has included some photos of the existing light rail station, the properties adjacent to it. The Cardinal Bar, I would note, is not included in this application. It's, the plat would not include that, so the boundaries are right next to it, but just not part of it. The existing site does include six to seven single-family homes and the bus turnaround that serves 38th Street Station. So the applicant is proposing just one phase right now of the overall planned unit development. It's a three-story commercial building next to the light rail transit station. So as you can see in this rendering, the five-story building and the building to the south of that would not be proposed as part of this review. The applications that are required for this proposal are rezoning, as I explained, the conditional use permit for a planned unit development, a variance to reduce the window requirement from 40% to 9% in the PO overlay district, also to reduce the minimum floor area requirement from 1 to 0.8 in the PO district, site plan review for a three-story commercial building, and then the preliminary and final plat, which is customary for the planned unit development. The site plan is in front of you here, and the mixed-use, this is mixed-use building, so this is the commercial building that's proposed as part of this current phase. There's also a plaza proposed between the building and 38th Street. The site would also include a new public street that's an extension of 30th Avenue South, so as you can see, traffic would circulate from 38th Street going north. This is where the bus bays would be located. There are three bus bays next to the proposed building. They would circulate to the west and then exit out on 29th Avenue South. The applicant is also proposing numerous streetscape improvements as part of the application, and future phases would include about 160, 164 dwelling units and 18,000 additional square feet of commercial space and 210 parking spots, but those are not included in today's review. Here are the floor plans for the proposed building. So the ground floor would be entirely retail, 5,000 square feet, and the second floor would be office, and the third floor would also be office. It'd just be a little mezzanine area. Here are the elevations for the building. So it's mostly brick. There are metal panel and fiber cement accents as well. The east elevation that faces the light rail station has a 696-square-foot mural. The west elevation, which is highlighted, faces 30th Avenue South, the proposed 30th Avenue South, and that's the one that requires a variance for the minimum window requirement. The north elevation is in the lower left-hand corner of the page, and that is just like a tiny portion of the building that's facing the north and also the light rail transit station. And then the south elevation is almost entirely glass, and it faces East 38th Street. And staff is recommending approval of all the applications except for the variance to reduce the minimum window requirement along the west elevation. Staff finds that there are three bus bays and also a public street that are right, right next to this elevation. The minimum window requirement, again, is 40%, and the applicant is proposing 9%. And part of this has to do with the way that windows are calculated in the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. So we only count a window if it's, if it's, the bottom portion of it is at least two feet above, is within two feet above the adjacent grade. So all of the windows along the ground floor are actually above two feet, so they do not count towards the calculation. Staff does not find a practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance. There is sufficient room to provide the 40% windows. This is a rendering showing the, the building from this, from the east. You can also see the plaza. Here's the view from the light rail. This would have the mural on it. This would have the mural on it. There's also a blank wall, 30 feet in width, and I'll get to that in a second, but staff is recommending that this be mitigated through the site plan review conditions. So as part of the planned unit development, the applicant is required to provide 15 points total worth of amenities based on the building placement, and which qualifies for five points, and then the 10 points just to establish, establish the planned unit development. And then they're also requesting an alternative for off-street parking and loading, but they are not required to provide points for that. So a total of 15 points are required. Staff is recommending a total of 23 points for the public right-of-way dedication, the plaza, art feature, lighting, and the water feature. Here is their plaza design. The PUD analysis goes into a lot of detail about how the plaza does and does not comply with the plaza standards and how certain conditions of approval could be attached to the planning development to require compliance, because otherwise there would be a variance required for not meeting these plaza standards, and also the amenity points would not be awarded for the plaza. So that's where the conditions of approval are coming from. It's to meet the letter of the law and the plaza ordinance. And then just to go over one in particular is the pedestrian access through the plaza. So there are some references in the site plan to a fence that would be located here and here. The applicant is not proposing a fence at this time, but we do want to require, to specify that a fence would not be placed between the building and the plaza to make sure that it is as open as possible. Also, staff has concerns about the way that pedestrian and bicycle access would work in the plaza because of the placement of some existing mechanical equipment here, so it would be screened, but it does provide a major obstruction on the east side of the plaza. And just to back up a second, the entire plaza includes private and public property for all of the hardscape, so it'd be about, this would be the actual size of a plaza. This is also the water feature that is proposed, and then you can see that the applicant is proposing a variety of paver materials within the plaza area, and then this landscaping design. So I'm just going to read from the plaza ordinance to show where staff is coming from. So plazas shall be designed to allow for pedestrian bicycle access through and/or around the plaza. Multiple access points shall be provided for each plaza with one access point being connected to a public street, public sidewalk, or public pathway. All plazas shall be designed in accordance with the accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Unobstructed walkways with a minimum of four feet in width shall connect the plaza to an entrance of any building on the same zoning lot, and when adjacent to a transit stop, said transit stop shall be integrated into the design of the plaza. So staff finds that because there is no predictable path provided with the current design for pedestrians, especially those coming from the southernmost bus bay and who want to access the light rail transit station or just simply cross the plaza, staff is requiring that at least a four-foot minimum walkway, unobstructed, would be provided and that the plan be amended to reflect that. And these are some of the conditions, as I have already mentioned. Some of them have to do with just maintaining the plaza and the value of the art feature and the fencing, and also providing that four-foot walkway, also providing the minimum amount of seating and trash receptacles. And then also requiring that the plaza shall be open to the public during daylight hours. So all of these conditions would make the plaza in compliance with the zoning code and also qualify for the amenity points. Staff is also recommending a number of site plan review conditions of approval. And a lot of these have to do with alternative compliance, as explained in the staff report. So one is that lighting shall be provided at all building entrances. So that would just require a few updates to their elevations. At least one principal entrance shall be defined by an architectural feature. So the ground floor level, as again, is all retail, so having at least one defined entrance would help guide people to the retail space. Also recommending that the east elevation be mitigated or be revised so that there are no blank walls exceeding 25 feet in length, and also requiring that all windows be transparent between four and seven feet above the adjacent grade, and this goes hand-in-hand with the window variance request. Staff is also recommending that all refuse recycling and compost containers be indicated on the site. So right now, the floor plans and site plans don't show where those would be located, and if they're on the exterior of the building, they should be fully screened. And finally, staff is recommending that the site plan be revised to comply with the minimum bicycle parking requirements for the office and commercial spaces. And again, staff is recommending approval with these conditions, except for the window variance. We've received a handful of comments that should be in your packets that they vary between expressing support for the project and also there are some concerns about traffic. In particular, there is some concern that the bus exiting on 29th Avenue South is going to cause a lot of concerns for those residential uses nearby. It also is going to require taking out parking on the entire west side of that block, so some business owners are concerned about the impacts of that to their properties. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes. I'm looking at a blank screen in my paperless version here, so I'm a little bit handicapped. But you talked about the blank walls. Are they being eliminated or mitigated?
Mitigated is, yeah. We use the terminology kind of interchangeably, staff, but we just want to see that there's some variation in the building so that the east elevation has a little bit more of visual interest.
Was there any discussion of what that might be, or it's just you know that it needs to be mitigated?
Right. Staff is not recommending granting alternative compliance for that aspect of the site plan review, and I have not heard from the applicant as to if they're amenable to that condition or if they do have any ideas for mitigating the blank wall.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rockwell?
Vreeland, can you tell us what the percentage of glass is on the, on the building, on the, I guess it would be the western building face? So they're hitting 9%-
Oh, right.
-of the window requirement, but on a technicality. So what's, and I understand, like, how high up are the, how high up is the bottom of the window-
Yeah.
-as designed, and what percentage of the building face is glass?
Thank you. That's a good question. I believe in the applicant's materials, they're showing it's 30%, but staff has not done that exact calculation because it was not required for the site plan review or for the, for the variance. We're just looking at what meets the variance or not, but I believe it's about 30% for the whole elevation.
What's the height of the sill?
I want to say it's, I want to say it's four feet, but I don't have that in front of me.
And then, next clarifying question, the plaza requirements, you talked about needing a pathway through or around, or is that the language?
Yes, through and/or around.
Through and/or around. So the, just in terms of meeting the letter of the law, does the sidewalk that goes around meet the letter of the law?
Yes, that would be, so you would, you're saying-
Right.
Yeah. Yes, that would be possible, but based on the integration of the transit stop, that's where staff is coming from, that the transit stop has not been fully integrated into the design of pedestrian access.
And so the staff's thinking without specific design, but like, what, I guess, what is the exact, is the intent to have sort of a marked walkway through the plaza or just to make sure that, like, people haven't moved chairs? Like, it could, the pathway could change from day to day as people move their chairs and tables, or like, what is, I guess, you know, I guess I think of like walking through a plaza, and it might be a little bit messy, and that's like, maybe okay, particularly if there's a sidewalk going around it, or not. I don't know. Like, if I'm asking what your take is.
The intent is that there currently is no predictable path that would integrate the transit stop, so right now, for instance, the paving materials don't really lead you through a certain way. If you were visually impaired, you might have a lot of trouble crossing the site to Hiawatha, so that's where staff is coming from.
Okay. Great. Cool. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of staff?
My question is-
Well, we'll open the public hearing in a moment, so you'll have an opportunity to speak or ask any questions of us. But if the commission doesn't have any further questions of staff, I will open the public hearing. And I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, though, and if you wouldn't mind responding to the window variances and some of the other outstanding issues. That'd be good.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Lander. I'm with the Lander Group, the developer. I've got my very capable design team with me who's going to address the building questions. I'm going to address the public realm and the plaza issues that came up, if I could. First of all, we're very excited to be here. One could argue this is the culmination of a vision that started 20-some years ago with the idea of adding a light rail line to Minneapolis and the idea of building transit-oriented development around it. Yet here we are in 2017 with a large surface parking lot for the bus turnaround. So we're very excited to be able to bring this idea forward that was talked about for so long, very well captured in the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan in the early 2000s, captured again in 2007 in the Small Area Plan. So there's been a lot of people talking about, we want this to happen, so we're thrilled to be part of the process to make it happen. And as was shown, we think there's tremendous amount of amenities in this area already and great opportunity. The single-family housing stock, we think, will be very attractive to millennials who are filling up all of our apartments when they have their children. And yet, there's really no there-there. There's a highly degraded public realm. You've got telephone poles right in the middle of sidewalks. You've got not a very attractive pedestrian environment. So our project seeks to address those things, to add amenities and services and housing options to the area, to make significant improvements to the public realm in the process. We are just completing our first building in this district, a block to the west that we were in front of you with a year ago, 3828, we call it. And as part of that project, we're doing about a block and a half of the streetscape on 38th Street because we think the principal public place for this district is 38th Street, and we want it to be a great street. So we're going to end up rebuilding it all the way from 27th to Hiawatha. This particular application is dealing with the block from 29th to Hiawatha, but we see both sides of 38th Street be re-landscaped, bike parking, much improved pedestrian environment is really the principal public realm, followed by the new 30th Avenue, is the new bus turnaround that's in the plan. Again, beautiful broad sidewalks, they're landscaped, a public street, not a bus lane. And we really worked hard to get that design right, working with Met Transit on the bus operations. And then the last two pieces are what are both a north and south plaza. In the interest of time, I won't flash up all the designs again, but to the north side of our building that's under review today is an area that's owned by Met Transit that we're making, we're proposing substantial enhancements to, to really, you know, enhance the visitor experience, the pedestrian environment as the bus users come and go and transfer to the light rail and the bike people arrive to get on one or the other. And then on the south side, the image that's up on the screen here today, I want to address that a little bit more carefully, because I think frankly, there's sort of a misunderstanding about our intentions here. That entire area, all the way out to the public right-of-way on 38th Street, is private property that we're leasing at a 99-year lease from Met Transit, and we could have proposed a building all the way up to 38th Street. We elected to create a public space. We approached the various public entities about, could it be a public space, and no one wanted it. So we were bringing it forward as a privately-owned public space, honestly. And as we went about, so we decided that we wanted a nice 20-foot dining area, and while we don't have a tenant secured yet for that space, we're hopeful that we'll get a food user that would really be able to activate that southern, that northern edge of the plaza. And then we had a 40-foot dimension from the north edge of the plaza to the sidewalk, and actually, the plaza is only 40 feet by 100 feet. It fits inside the public sidewalk system. The sidewalk on New 30th and the sidewalk on 38th are actually part of the street and sidewalk system, not the plaza. So the plaza is just that interior area, and we had that 40 by 100 to work with. And we knew that the private seating for the restaurant by regulation would require a barrier there, so we elected to use the planters that are along the north edge there to create that barrier, leaving the maximum amount of area available in the plaza itself. We looked at before the staff's concerns and after the staff's concerns about adding a pedestrian way on the north side there, but we felt like that space was much better served inside the plaza. We could slide those planters four feet down, and we would meet the staff's recommendation. We think this is a better design. I failed to mention Bob Close, our landscape architect, isn't able to be here today to make this case. But we looked at both of those options, and we think there's tremendous, you know, much enhanced pedestrian movements there. The plaza itself, we worked with Met Transit very carefully with an elaborate diagram we don't have for you today that shows the pedestrian movements across the plaza. And then there's also the beautifully new landscape 38th Street sidewalk. So there's lots of ways to move east and west on that site, just not one more path on the north side of the plaza. We felt like that was superfluous, that wasn't the chosen path. I'd rather move across the plaza if I was coming there or all the way out to the sidewalk. So we think that provides a very nice arrangement. For any of you that see of our project at the end of Lake Street, West River Commons, we have Longfellow Grill, we have the exact condition there, where we have a quasi-public space with public art that invites people to come and enjoy the place without spending any money, but it is segregated from the private seating that adjoins it with the same kind of landscape treatment. So we've really used that landscape wall to create that barrier there. So we would like to ask the staff to approve the project as proposed. We think it's got tremendous circulation needs. Happy to answer any questions about that or bring back diagrams that we did from Met Transit that showed that movement, but we think it's going to be a tremendous asset for the community. And we see this, this whole project, I mean, much of our first phase, we're showing it all to you, some of it's sort of shaded out, in part because this has been a very, very complicated project. I think it was clear by just the staff's report, trying to get our hands around how to do this. So we're bringing forward the public realm elements, and this first office building today, we'll be back pretty soon with the rest of it, but there's so much detail required by the current process that we needed to put that off to just, just after we got through this part. So we're starting today with the public realm elements, the street, the plazas, and the first building. Kim is going to step up and address the questions about the porosity of the building, and I'd be happy to take any questions about the plaza or the public realm as well.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Slack, then Commissioner Lupi Pierre.
Yeah. What was driving the location of the signal box?
The signal box is there. It's several hundred thousand dollars to remove. It's sitting up on a little mound of dirt right now. We have conceived a really cool perforated metal enclosure that would backlit to really actually make that an element, and there's a good 12-foot clear between movement there, between that box and any fixed object. So there's a very nice, very adequate pedestrian way that, it appears maybe a bit pinched, but in reality, if you check that out, there's very nice movement there.
Commissioner Lupi Pierre?
Yeah. So how tall does the perforated screening end up being?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. How tall does the perforated screen of that box-
About eight feet.
Eight feet? And, because it looks quite large in comparison to the plaza on the plan, but do you have any concerns about SEPTED or public safety, just as an obstruction to seeing what's coming ahead?
Well, we have, this shroud that we've created around is about, set about a foot off. We've worked with a variety of engineers about any danger issues associated with that. You can walk up and touch it right now, actually. So we weren't, we did not, well, we did not prioritize the several hundred thousand dollars to try to move that, actually, is what we did. We said, let's try to work with that and save that money maybe for some other kinds of enhancements, because we think it'll work in the end, and again, it's a little hard to see at this scale plan.
I was just curious more about safety in terms of people lurking behind it and not being able to see them as you're biking or walking by.
It's, I mean, it's open and well-lit all the way around it, and I mean, there's a solid pedestrian movement on the east of the box as well there. So I think it'll sort of sit out in the open space as opposed to feel like a place you could hide behind.
All right. Any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, I guess we can move on to the other components of the applicant's presentation, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kim Breth, I'm with LHB. In response to Commissioner Rockwell's questions related to the porosity, the issue isn't so much the percentage of glass. We are at 40% of glass. The problem is how you measure it per the code. The sills are designed at being three feet. Item D6 on the agenda indicates that the space is retail use. It's really more for dining and beverage service. We feel the appropriate sill height along that wall is three feet to accommodate seating directly against the wall without displaying table or counter edges. So for instance, if, one way that the-
On the overhead.
One way that that space could work is, this illustrates- One way that that space could work is this illustrates a potential restaurant use with tables or buffet space along that west wall. And the challenge of providing seating up against the wall in this awkward, flat iron-shaped building, really by keeping the window sills up at three feet maintains flexibility and for use of the building. So we think three feet is the appropriate sill height on a commercial application rather than two feet, which might be appropriate for window boxes on a regular retail display. So we would recommend acceptance of a three-foot window sill height. And we entirely agree with the goal of porosity into the building. And so at 40%, measured from three feet, rather than currently, you cannot count any of that window area unless the window is at two feet or lower. So we recommend and would argue in favor of the variance, whether that's deemed by either the 9% reflecting the window that we're showing or by interpreting the code measurement as being measured from three feet and above rather than two feet or below. In relation to a couple of the other conditions, I'd like to address a few of them. We agree with most of the conditions. We just have a few that we'd like to get clarified and adjusted. Item D6 just references the retail spaces. It's really more for dining and beverage-type use in this building. And so along that line, and because of the unique configuration, we'll be incorporating architectural feature and door element along the west side. But we need to see and work with the final vendor and have the flexibility to work for the final resolution of how that would occur along the west elevation. On item D8, we also will work towards and achieve the 25-foot maximum on uninterrupted wall. And in conjunction with that, we'll resolve item D11 and include the refuse recycling and compost containers within the building rather than outside the building. Item D10 is the item that I initially addressed in relation to the variance and how we count the window opening. We do expect and intend to exceed the 40% window area along that side, but the issue is how we count it. Finally, we failed in accurately depicting the bike parking count in item D12. I would just say that the current bike parking for the entire station is 16. The required bike parking for the entire development, as proposed, would be 109. We are currently proposing 275. The challenge is that the initial phase includes 16 exterior ones and 51 that are counted inside the transit bike station-focused bike parking facility. So the way that the count works currently, we think, is more than offset by what we're providing in other ways throughout the development. In the comments that Michael made earlier, just to point out the two conditions that relate to the site are items B4, related to the plaza circulation. The other item that we've discussed is item B7, where the developer, we'd prefer to keep references to the various types of seating provided in the plaza to the horizontal seating in the fixed elements with a variety of seating, movable seating, including seating with backs provided in the flexible seating rather than the built-in seating. We think that works towards the issue of porosity and visibility rather than intrusion of, introduction of vertical backs within the fixed plaza development. With those clarifications, we would support and work with staff on the rest of the conditions of the application. So thank you for your consideration.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre, did you have a question for this?
Yeah. Is your window sill height of three feet, I assume that's above the finished floor in the interior.
Correct.
How does that compare to the exterior grade?
It's essentially the same.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
There is modest grade, so I'd say it's inches.
Commissioner Rockwell?
Could you restate your, like, where you agree and disagree with the staff recommendation on number seven? Or is it not, sorry, on B7, the seats? There are a lot of different types of seats here, and you also discussed a lot of different types of seats. So I'm trying to keep it straight.
So in condition D7, I believe the staff is recommending that the fixed seating have both bench-type seating and seating with backs in the fixed elements. And that's the case where we would prefer to not have backs on the fixed seating, the bench-type seating on the retaining walls around the plantings.
Got it. So you are saying you agree with the number of feet of seating?
Yes.
That you are wishing to redistribute effectively the backs?
Correct.
From fixed seating to movable seating?
Correct.
Understood. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Slack?
This may be a question, again, for the applicant. Going back to the design of the plaza, you know, I struggle a little bit with circulation through the space. And unfortunately, you do have this large-scale infrastructure piece that you're trying to work around, which is, in, you know, in your position, I probably wouldn't move it either. Wondering if, so you have that, and then you have a vertical sign for Metro Transit, which is more out basically on the sidewalk edge, which I'm guessing is a tall structure as well, just looking at the images that have been provided. Wondering if that last planter, so what would be the southeast planter, wants to be maybe ground level or wants to be a curb-high planter? It just feels like with those large-scale vertical elements that people coming off of either the train or they're walking down the sidewalk, that it creates sort of this sense of enclosure at the entrance to make it feel like it's private, like you can't go in there. So I don't know, maybe even eliminating that one planter at the end. I know then it sort of messes up the geometry of the space, but that would help sort of open it up. Another idea could be, instead of being so rigid with the screening, which sounds really nice, maybe it's more of an oval or something, something that allows maybe more visual flow into the space. That might help a little bit. I just kind of struggle with seeing that as a space that people will want to access, at least from that side. From the other side, yeah, I could see that. And much like the other space that you talked about, your other development, it will get used. I mean, you know, that in close proximity to transit into the restaurant, it will have people. I'm just wondering if you can take a look at how that mobility accesses that eastern edge of that plaza.
I appreciate those comments. I think it's easiest as a design team to kind of, as much as possible, to respond to kind of criteria. So these same issues were raised by Met Transit, and I'm sorry we didn't bring it today, but we did actually quite a graphic. And we said, "Well, what are you looking for, an unobstructed path?" They said, "We want at least a six-foot clear, unobstructed path." And we said, "Wow, we have 14 feet in the plaza." So it seemed like we exceeded that requirement by a dramatic amount between that shroud and the planter. So I really appreciate the concerns about that, not wanting to neck down, not wanting to feel privatized or in any way keep you from flowing through there. I would argue the difficulty is getting it at the right scale, understanding the actual dimensions, and really responding to the specific design because that issue of porosity, I think, is important to everybody. We hear it from you guys. It's important to Met Transit. It's important to us. What we think the actual design, when you look at it carefully, delivers that. The issue about different shapes to the piece of equipment there, we were going for the tightest, smallest enclosure that we could create. So any shapes would tend to increase that size there for some of the same reasons, to try to minimize that impact. And again, I think we might have been helpful to have the existing conditions there to see what people are dealing with now because this is just so dramatically improved on what they're experiencing there. But again, we went down to, in terms of circulation, let's talk about that in terms of dimensions. What kind of a free, clear path are we looking for? Let's be sure we have that. And we went through that whole drill with Met Transit and satisfied their concerns, I think, are the same ones that you folks are raising. So, and again, happy to do more work with you and the staff on really getting down on the minutia of that. But we have been through that with Met Transit, so.
Any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And I know we have a few people who'd like to speak on this item, so you can decide who goes first and come to the microphones, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Jennifer Halter. I live at 3820 29th Avenue South. And I'm representing the homeowners on 29th Avenue South, south of 38th Street, who are most impacted by the proposal for rezoning the property at 3805 29th Avenue South from C1 to C3A. The Lander Group is proposing a four-story building at 3805 29th Avenue South, which is inconsistent with the rest of the buildings on the block and inconsistent with the aesthetic of South Minneapolis. The property is already zoned for mixed retail and housing, but is limited to no more than two and a half stories. The neighbors and, or my neighbors and I are not opposed to redevelopment within the current C1 zoning. The property at 3805 29th Avenue is a single-family lot among one-and-a-half-story bungalows with no house more than two stories tall. The proposal to rezone the north side of 38th Street between 29th and 30th Avenues from C1 to C3A is not opposed because the plan encompasses that entire city block. The Community and Economic Development Review is incorrect in assessing the four-story building proposed at 3805 29th Avenue to be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Yes, there are large buildings in the area, but they are only a recent unfortunate trend west of Hiawatha and were opposed by residents when these large buildings were proposed. They were opposed because they are immediately adjacent to much smaller buildings on the block. There is nothing unique about a four-story building among the same kind of four-story buildings built along the light rail route. We're asking that you retain the two-story trend south of 38th Street consistent with every other building on the south side of 38th Street between 29th and 30th Avenues. The proposed four-story building at 3805 29th Avenue South injures the property owner immediately adjacent to the south by putting the existence of a large shade tree in peril and interferes with the enjoyment of the homeowner and the neighbors. The proposed four-story building would interfere with the natural light through the second-floor windows on the north side of the farmhouse and gives the rest of the block a view of a sheer four-story wall instead of trees. Additionally, a four-story building at the corner of 3805 29th Avenue shades the street, potentially contributing to an icy intersection during winter months. A four-story mixed-use building will create greater congestion at 3805 29th Avenue South. There is no parking on 38th Street side of that property as it's a traffic lane. And the traffic patterns are such that the traffic entering at this location is difficult and risky already. Furthermore, 29th and 30th Avenues are critical parking areas. And if previous light rail platform area development is considered, it will be difficult to find a retailer for Building 3, according to the developer's plan, due to parking limitations. For example, it took three years to locate a tenant for the 46th Street transit node due to the limited parking. It's my understanding from conversations with my council representative, the 46th Street neighbors had to make concessions to their critical parking to fill the vacant retail space. The residents on 29th Avenue, south of 38th Street, are not amenable to changing the critical parking status. Please reference page 37 of the CPED review document and note the majority of the properties in this area are one-and-a-half-story to two-story structures. Approving a C3A zoning for 3805 29th Avenue is extraordinarily inconsistent with the rest of the structures on the south side of 38th Street and is not consistent with the aesthetic of South Minneapolis and this specific block and is not supported by previous and current neighboring homeowners. The current zoning ordinance is C1. We ask this body to support the current ordinance for C1 zoning at 3805 29th Avenue South. And if you doubt my representation, I ask you to suspend a rezoning decision today for 3805 29th Avenue South and provide a threshold for the number of neighbor signatures I need to collect to demonstrate the neighborhood opposition to rezoning this parcel. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other speakers who would like to go next? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Smart. I own the house at 3815 29th Avenue. And, you know, I'm concerned again about the congestion. I've been doing a lot of landscaping out front this summer, and I see high rate of speed traffic coming down that street. Actually, there's a speed sign there right now that's, you know, monitoring what goes on, that the people that live to the south of us and the east, they use 29th Avenue to access 38th Street, that it's a very busy walking street because we've got the high school right there. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also very concerned about the parking. I'm actually residing in a condo at 37th and Snelling, just two short blocks away. It's a 26-unit building that every single person has a car in that building. Many of the people are flight attendants, and they walk right over to the light rail station. There are two apartment buildings directly across the alley from me on 37th and Minnehaha. Many of those tenants are also parking their cars, their second cars out on Snelling, that they don't have enough parking in their parking lots. So people want their cars. They don't want to go grocery shopping in January on the bus. That I'm also concerned about the water table. I have a usable basement that's, you know, refinished right now. And if it changes the amount of water, because half of that lot is open ground now with trees. So if all of a sudden it changes the way the water is, and I'm 40 feet away, you know, the next-door neighbor, it's much worse. But for me, I'm still concerned about that. And then the alley, it's in very poor shape. And again, it's a very busy, I couldn't even turn down it today because of all the traffic. In fact, the traffic that was headed east this afternoon when I was coming here was backed up to 28th Avenue. That it's an extremely busy, you know, area with the different stoplights. There's one right before Hiawatha. There's one right at the Cardinal Bar. That the school buses and the regular buses, there's just a lot of traffic going on there all the time. All right. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And please state your name and address.
Hi there. I'm Doug Disano. I live right across the street from, I guess this is not on there, but I live across the street from 3805, the proposed four-story building by the Lander's Group. I just wanted to come here today to appeal to you guys. I, basically, as a neighbor, Jennifer Halter actually was very well-spoken about the situation with, you know, a lot of people talk about lack of parking. I think the reason people talk about that is because a lot of the neighbors that live in neighborhoods such as South Minneapolis, it's always overlooked. It's, I have a building directly behind my house. I have a one-and-a-half-story bungalow. And the building was built nine years ago. And I went to a meeting exactly like we're here tonight. And everyone told me, you know, there's going to be, you know, the millennials are going to have bicycles. Everyone's going to commute. Well, I live directly behind this building. It's got 16 units. And they had, they allowed 16 parking spots for those 16 units. And their boyfriends and girlfriends and whatever leave all their cars outside of my house already because they don't have enough parking inside. And this is exactly, you know, my point is that, and that's 16 units. And I believe this development is 180 units. So you put that much pressure on a very small area. And also, what I'm really concerned about is, as far as the parking, but I'm pointing at it here, but is there a way to put that up there? I don't know. Oh, that's okay. Yeah, just the site plan. One thing that wasn't, was briefly touched on earlier was basically along 29th Avenue, north of 38th Street. I guess what I understand as of tonight is that the bus is going to come down 29th Avenue. And because it's such a narrow area, you're going to have to eliminate parking there as well. So, and I'm just wondering where all these cars are going to go. I've lived in this, in my place for 17 years and have noticed, you know, since the light rail, which I think is a great thing. It's just, and I know there's going to be development. I'm not against development, but it seems over and over, people disregard the people that live in those neighborhoods already that have made those neighborhoods very, you know, like decent, solid neighborhoods. That's why people are developing there, is that, you know, they say over and over, the Lander Group says they want to be a good neighbor to the people that already live there. But I haven't really seen that from the Lander's Group. We went to a meeting May 10th to talk about these plans, and no one mentioned the change of zoning to the commercial, to a two-story commercial, to the, the new zoning. of zoning to the commercial, to a two-story commercial, to the, what, the new zoning that they're going for, you know, this evening. So I find that a little disingenuous because we were there as concerned neighbors to find out what the deal is with parking in this building, and now it seems to be they kind of changed their plans. But anyway, I just kind of urge you guys to look at the critical parking. We have a high school two blocks away, as Caroline mentioned. A lot of, a lot of students flying through that 29th Avenue street, and now it seems you'll have buses coming through that 29th Avenue. It's just, it's a tremendous amount of, of traffic. There's tons of foot traffic as well because it's a light rail. So I guess I just would urge you guys to, to really look at having the Lander's Group either provide more parking to try to offset some, where all, I just don't know where all these cars are going to go. Any Vikings game or Twins game, people park in front of Ted Cook's barbecue, which is supposed to be one-hour parking. That's parked solid, all the way down to 27th Avenue. So it's, parking's already, we already have critical parking. It's a huge issue, and I think this is going to compound it exponentially with the amount of units they have. One last thing I had to say about the 3805 building, I live right across the street, and I agree with Jennifer Halter in the fact that we've had many city planning groups with SENA. And, and, you know, basically, that really goes against the other houses in the, in the area. Mine's one and a half story. There's no structures that are over two stories. So it seems like a big, you know, colossus next to a lot of small houses. And it would be nice if there were some, you know, a lower, to lower that, that building. And there's no setbacks either. It's just a sheer face of, from what we discussed with Lander Group, apparently there are setbacks in the larger unit, but there's not in the, in the one that's right next to the houses, right next door on the 3805. So anyway, I've just urged you to look at the details and hopefully, you know, try to consider the people that live in the neighborhood, because it seems, though, that the Lander's Group have kind of, kind of, kind of disregarded some of the neighbors that live there. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi. I'm Sam Newberg. I live at 3913 29th Avenue South. I do support the Lander Group 38th Street Station Plan as proposed. It represents the type of development that I hope to see when my wife and I moved into a home within a five-minute walk of the 38th Street Station more than a dozen years ago. Specifically, it creates a new urban street and plaza and vastly improved public realm overall, with attention given to how those new buildings relate to the public realm. The Lander Group specifically improves upon the original station area plan approved by the city 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, and please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Roberts. I live at 3725 29th Avenue South, Minneapolis. And what I'd like to mention is that I live at basically the top of the triangle here. I am completely impacted by this proposal in that I live on 29th. I am facing the light rail. I take the light rail every day. I walk by Cardinal Bar. I stand at the bus stops. There are four bus stops in that station with light rail. And I walk by those seven homes that are on 29th that will be rezoned. I mention all of these things because there are things I see in this proposal that are nice. I'm a major composter, so just the fact that you even mentioned recycling and composting is wonderful. And I understand the public area to have the plaza. But as has been mentioned by, and I'm going to get names wrong, Mikey, Jennifer, and Caroline, and another gentleman, traffic here is already bad. And this situation that's being described will require, my understanding is that this is a proposal and there's a draft, but what I don't understand about these designs is scale. We're very sensitive to scale in the neighborhood, as has been mentioned. It's a two-story neighborhood. Yes, there are buildings that are taller than two stories in this neighborhood, but not because we want it to be that way. This, as it's designed, is going to bring the bus traffic right through the neighborhood, a neighborhood which, by the way, needs more lighting at night because it's very poorly lit. And maybe that will improve with something like this, but at this moment, it's all very poorly lit, all the way along 38th, past your 3828, and it's been poorly lit for years. And we've requested new lights and not gotten them. Having the buses come through, it is an existing narrow street, 29th. Right now, the parking on 29th is permitted. You can, you can't park there because, between 1 and 2 and 7 and 8, because it's next to the light rail. And the light rail, everyone wants to park by the light rail and go somewhere. They want a park-and-ride. We don't have a park-and-ride. We don't have space for that. There's a part of me that says we don't have space for the scale of building that you're proposing. 3828, I'm not sure is going to have parking, but I know for sure this is cutting nonexistent parking down even further. And as someone who doesn't even drive, the fact that that's going to be a problem, we already have that problem. We already have people parking all along places that they're not supposed to park because we are 50 feet from the light rail. The buses coming through is going to really impact the neighborhood in a very strong, I'm a bus taker, and even I'm saying to you, that's going to be a lot of major traffic on a sensitive residential neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have several applications before us. I'll also mention that we do have the floor area ratio variance as well. It's not listed on the agenda, so we'll need to take action on that. Are there any further questions? Would someone like to start things off with a motion? This, of course, involves rezoning for the larger site. Yeah, and I'll note that that FAR variance is referenced in the memo. Basically, it's to lower the required floor area ratio for the proposed mixed-use 2 building that we're considering the site plan for tonight. It doesn't relate to the larger apartment buildings. All right. Commissioner Rockwell.
Just to get the discussion going, I'd move to approve, adopt staff recommendations and approve Item A, the rezoning.
All right. We have a motion to approve Item A, the rezoning. Is there a second? A motion and a second further discussion. Commissioner Rockwell.
None here. I've got some on Item B.
All right. I'll just mention, and we did hear some, some of the speakers reference concern over the specific geographic area of the rezoning. I do believe that since the comprehensive plan does designate much of this area as an activity center, and the 38th Street Station Area Plan really reinforces that the C3A zoning district is appropriate for all of the parcels that, that are listed, in my opinion. I don't know if there's any further discussion on that, but hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Zipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Six zero.
And that motion carries. Next, we have Item B, the conditional use permit for planned unit development. And Commissioner Rockwell.
I would move approval of Item B, conditional use permit for planned unit development with the following changes. Eliminate condition number four, and I can explain that if I have a second, and amend Item Number 7 to read, "A minimum of 126 linear feet of seating shall be provided within the plaza, including a minimum of 25 linear feet of fixed seats, a minimum of 25 linear feet of seats with backs, which may be fixed or movable, and a minimum of 32 linear feet of movable chairs, et cetera, et cetera."
All right. We have a motion to approve Item B, the conditional use permit, striking condition number four and modifying condition number seven, so that the language related to the requirement for seats with backs would allow them to be fixed or movable. Ms. Smith?
President Brown, thank you. I would say for condition number seven, I don't, I would not say that that is something that can be revised because otherwise a variance would be required for the plaza standards. The difference being that this is completely quantitative versus Item Number Four, you could, maybe the planning commission can make the argument that that has been met, that the intent of the plaza standards has been met and it's okay, but seven, it's, it's a matter of numbers and we can't do it without a variance.
And so I, so I see here, so is the plaza requirement that there, because this language in here is ambiguous to me. The plaza requirement is that the 25 feet, linear feet of seats with backs is our fixed seats?
Yes. This, these are the numbers based on the code language. These are the, so.
Right. No, I understand that, but, but the linear feet of seats with backs is, it does not specify, that clause does not specify.
No. It's based on the plaza area, so it's 20% of the overall plaza area, which is 6,300 square feet. So.
Right. Well, no, I'm not asking about the number.
Okay.
I'm asking, so, so we have that single clause, surrounded by commas, "A minimum of 25 linear feet of seats with backs." But that clause does not specify whether those seats with backs must be fixed or may be movable. Do the plaza standards specify so?
No. You know what? I, I agree with you. I agree with you.
So, yeah, so I'm not changing any of the linear feet. I was clarifying that that, those particular 25 feet with backs, that we will have 25 feet with backs, but that those may be fixed or they may be movable. But they, but they must provide 25 linear feet of seating with backs. Does that not meet the plaza standards? What, do you have the language in front of you?
No. I mean, I think that would be, that would be fine. Yeah, 30, at least. So, I'm sorry, could you?
Yeah, so.
Restate how you want it to change, though?
Well, I would, so I'm just clarifying, so the way I propose changing it was to, was to read as follows.
Okay.
So not actually changing the language, just adding, adding a clarifier.
Okay.
"A minimum of 25 linear feet of seats with backs, which may be fixed or movable." I, maybe, we should say the seats may be fixed or movable rather than the backs may be fixed or movable. You know, we can get into drafting. The intent there is that we can have 25 linear feet of seating with backs, and it doesn't really matter to me whether that is screwed to the ground or can be shuffled to the side, as long as someone has someone, something to lean on, which I assume is the intent of the code, but it looks like, Jason, did you pull it up? No.
I don't have it pulled up, but I, I believe you are correct that that is flexible enough to accommodate what your intent is.
So it's probably not even changing what the code require, I mean, I can't, right?
It might not be necessary, actually.
So then I am, I am, for the purposes of here, interpreting this language, assuming that this is coming from the code, as implying that the seats can be fixed or movable. How about that?
Sounds good.
Blurt the heck out of that.
Do you need a second for your question?
Yes. Is there a second? I think I heard a second. So we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note that in this motion, Item 3 remains, which is that the applicant must submit a plaza plan that meets the requirements. And so that includes ADA accessibility and the details of these plaza seats and everything. So first of all, I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear that that's what's happening. It sounds like anything aside from that would really need a variance anyway. I, you know, and so I just comment then that I appreciate the attention to making sure that this plaza is ADA accessible and that it's going to work for people who are trying to get to the train station, and I'm sure the development team is committed to that as well, so that I don't have an issue there taking out Item 4 as long as it's covered there in Item 3, and it provides a little bit more flexibility to go back and forth on that final design. Thanks.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
So just for the sake of clarification, I want to reiterate my interpretation of Number 4 when Mayling and I were talking earlier, that, you know, I think that the plaza requirements require a, an unobstructed walkway either through or around. And I, I think we have that unobstructed walkway via the sidewalk. And as I think about the operation of a plaza, you know, I think having organic movement without necessarily a straight line is, is attractive to me from a public realm standpoint. And we know that there is enough capacity on the sidewalk to handle the train trips because that's what happens today. And so that's just my thinking there and how I'm interpreting that, and I think that it is, we can eliminate that condition while being consistent with the plaza standards.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Zipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Six zero.
And that motion carries. Next, we have Item C, the variance related to the minimal, minimum window requirement. Any further questions on that, or would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Luke here.
Yeah. Before I make a motion, I just wanted to say that I empathize that it's an eating establishment and you want to provide seating, although I've eaten at plenty of restaurants where the window height is below the table. But I would note that the standard table height is 30 inches, so perhaps a compromise could be reached that if they lowered their, their window sill height to 30-inch height, that it would be allowed in this instance to be, to be counted at that point and, and not to the full 24 inches, for example. So it's, it's splitting literally the one-foot difference by six inches. Otherwise, I think I would be inclined to deny it because I know we've had a discussion back when we crafted this particular requirement, and I know Commissioner Cronze was particularly adamant about it, about the two feet, because it does block, three feet's surprisingly high. It doesn't seem high, but it is surprisingly high for somebody perusing, and who knows if it will be a restaurant in the long run or commercial retail or something that we want more visibility anyway. And I don't, I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with lower windows next to, next to seating anyway at a restaurant. So I'm willing to, I think, compromise on this one by six inches, but, but not any further. And I guess I'm looking for my peers for input as to whether or not they'd support a motion of that nature.
Right. Commissioner Slack?
I would support that. I'm just wondering if six inches would actually get them to the 40%.
I don't know, but they did testify that their window thing exceeded 40%. So my hope would be that the six-inch of whatever that's, that went out there, they could make it up somewhere, or they, maybe they already have.
I believe, and I might ask staff to clarify, the issue was that the lower windows were not counted at all because they are not at the appropriate height. So if, if we were to be okay with a So if, if we were to, to be okay with a 30 inch window height, the variance would still be required, we would simply want to.
Right, we would, yeah, but we would put it in the event and think it counted.
Had that as a condition if we were to approve the variance. All right. Commissioner Rockwell?
Oh, I'll keep going then, I, so I, so I will move to approve the variance in item C, and I think that the 30 inch condition is maybe best met under item 10 in the site plan review. So just a clean approval of the variance.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the variance as well as a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Zipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
That motion carries. Why don't we consider the FAR variance next? Someone like to make a motion on that? All right. Commissioner Vreeland, I assume that is a motion to approve the variance. We also have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Zipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
Motion carries. Next, we have the site plan review.
Would the suggested change to 10?
All right, so we have a motion to approve the site plan review with a modification to condition 10 related, which would basically strike the, the number two and replace that with 30 inches and 10 feet. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Lukey here.
I mean, I, I did wanna, I don't wanna necessarily condition this, but I did want to encourage the applicant to take another look at that perforated screening and the signage. It seems to me, there's a reason we don't, there's a reason we usually require engineers and architects on a building of this scale, and one is because there's a technical box to be checked, and yes, technically, there's enough room for people to walk through and it might seem fine, but I would argue that there is a certain passive psychological element and, and something that should be taken into account in terms of how people feel. Do they, do they, would they feel as though something that was eight feet tall, and I don't know how big that sign is, but it's cast awfully large and casts quite a shadow on your computer rendering. Would, would a, would a human being feel welcome, or not even a human being, would a, would a young woman feel comfortable walking there at 9:00 PM at night? I, I don't know if I would. So where there, although it meets the technical aspects of 12 feet, it's fine, I do wonder if the suggestions are making it more curved or making it more perforated in terms of sightlines and just seeing, seeming more welcoming is something that I would encourage you to explore, not, not because it's bailing on some code issue per se, but just mainly because there's an artistic element that I think would benefit all human beings who have to interact in a site as a pedestrian, as a, or as a bicyclist, and I, I would hate to see that this kind of be the downfall of people feeling welcome and invited and safe in the space. So I would just encourage you to continue that discussion about what that actually looks like.
Any further discussion on the site plan review? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Zipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
That motion carries. And finally, we have item E, the plat. Have a motion and a second to approve the plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Zipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item five. Our next item for discussion is item nine. Staff, it's Mr. Poor. Commissioner Rockwell, I know you had a question about this. Was, was there a specific question you had of, of staff, or should we ask them to just provide a brief presentation?
Yeah, I didn't have a, a particular question, actually. I just had reservations on the staff recommendation.
All right.
Good evening, commissioners. Forgive me, I'm not feeling my best this evening, so just bear with me if I don't seem as talkative as usual. What's before us tonight is a text amendment to amend the downtown entertainment billboard district offered by Councilmember Worsami. This was introduced last year in July, and it didn't move forward very long, or very fast. We did bring it to the committee of the whole, the last cyclist where, and I think for those of you that stuck around for that conversation, you can see that the, the staff received some direction and feedback that we took into account so that we pared this district down dramatically from what you saw before you at the committee of the whole. The downtown entertainment billboard district was created in 2009. It was meant to kind of augment Target Center, quite frankly, around Target Center and that, that blocky. Blocky had its own special rules or under an old PUD about very generous sign regulations. So at the time, they, in 2009, there was work to kind of expand this district, thinking that this was a regional sports center. It had been, just by way, Target Center had originally been approved for 14,500 square feet of signage by right in the district. When it, when the 1990 code was revised, that was inadvertently pulled out. So the downtown entertainment billboard district was in some sense to go back and make a regional sports center whole. It was always the intent for regional sports centers to have generous advertising. It was then in, in mind that around those centers, there would be additional signage, particularly around off-premise advertising, it would be allowed. So now we have a U.S. Bank Stadium that's gone online, and that was to some degree submitted this back in July. And so when you look at the district as proposed, and again, this is different than what was at the committee of the whole, what we see is that we've really picked up across the street to Portland and then along the other side of Sixth. These signs are intended to read, frankly, towards the plaza, not towards the commons, and, and they are not required to do any of the cap and replace trade-in. So these are allowed by right there. They are not part of a cap and replace system that exists along the freeways and other parts of downtown. That's also consistent with the other, the other node, if you will, of the downtown entertainment billboard district, and that's kind of the hallmark, is that it's a more generous district. It allows for larger signs typically, these will be higher value-added signage, often they're LED, which is a better technology than the 400 watt, you know, mercury vapor lamps that are not particularly ergonom, or excuse me, green. The other part of this amendment is to clean up some housekeeping with the prohibition on city financing of billboards. This came back in 2010. Frankly, even for a staff person who was around then, it's kind of muddled, isn't know why that was put in. We've talked to some of the city attorney, it was, I think, Joe, Councilmember Joe Bearne that put it in there, and I don't know what, exactly what the concerns on the, in the city council were at that time. I do know the city does get involved with limited interest in off-premise advertising under the franchise agreement for bus shelters or bus benches, for instance. So this is seen as kind of a housekeeping, it's kind of an odd ordinance to be residing in there. So one of the things we're doing here is to kind of eliminate that prohibition, it's, it's not seen to have any effect currently. I don't have much to add at this point about that, but I am open to questions, and I did appreciate the feedback at the committee of the whole, so.
Commissioner Lukey here.
Yeah, Mr. Poor, I was reading the, the report, and I just had a question. It says the proposed amendment is intended to allow for large off-premise advertising. How large is large?
So, large is large.
Well, that clears that.
A poster, well, the large signs you see on the freeway are typically 14 by 48 feet, 672 square feet. There are some larger signs that would be allowed. I don't think it's unreasonable to look at the sail on the Viking ship, the sail, which is kind of a billboard, as for size. It allows for, I think, 10 times the front edge of the building size, so it allows for large signs. I'm not sure how large, those signs would be custom made, they're not industry standards, but they would allow for larger signs, but they could be quite large.
And do we perceive these signs being mounted to the face of buildings, freestanding on the roof? What, what's the?
Well, they, they would typically be mounted, yes, they could be mounted. Freestanding is typically what you see. The roof would be, there's certain limits on the roof sign, I think these would generally be freestanding signs. Let me just say, when you get a sign that large, you get into structural issues too as well. So I think the idea behind it is, and what we've seen, is really that these are signs either mounted on the superstructure of a building, I mean, Target Center, even when they've redone it, has had to really have steel superstructure to hold these signs. So I think it's more likely they would either be roof signs with some added straddling on an existing building for structural support or freestanding.
Thank you.
Mr. Magrino?
Thanks. Sorry, I missed committee of the whole when this was being discussed a couple weeks ago. Isn't there sort of a general carve-out for the Viking Stadium from complying with, you know, our different zoning regulations and?
Not familiar with that term of art, carve-out.
Not carve-out, that's, I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
Trying to be that.
So there is an agreement for the U.S. Bank Stadium, I'm sorry, you said U.S. Bank Stadium, right?
I usually try to say Vikings, I'm not getting, you know.
U.S. Bank Stadium.
Not getting paid by them.
As we've been, as we've been told, referred to. It is not subject to strict adherence to the off-premise advertising regulations. Now, that is, there was an agreement between, it's actually was in the enabling legislation. So we, whether it was the plaza or signage, they are not under strict adherence to those rules. The old Metrodome had rules that applied for regional sports centers. This ordinance encompasses, encompasses the stadium in the sense, we don't want to create a donut, and that agreement was really in the enabling legislation for the stadium. They have still come to us for advice, they have, we have reviewed things, but they are not subject to strict adherence. So in effect, one of the unique things about the ordinance is the existing, the existing district here is almost irrelevant because they're exempt from it. So in effect, we're putting this here, which does kind of lay groundwork in the future. If there is a change under that agreement, or if there's different legislation, there is a regulatory framework that undergirds that property.
Okay.
I don't know if that was responsive or not, but.
No, that's good. Right. Any further questions of staff? All right. If there are none, would someone like to make a motion on this text amendment? Oh, excuse me, I always forget that about text amendments. We do, we do need to open the public hearing, so I will do that. I'll open the public hearing, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Matthew Allen with Clear Channel Outdoor. A pleasure to be here tonight. I just want to speak in support of the ordinance amendment. Started this process about a year ago with Councilmember Worsami and city staff. Certainly I'd like to thank your city staff. They've been a pleasure to work with, especially Steve Poor. Certainly agree with their recommendation to expand the downtown billboard entertainment district. This is, but it's mainly what we're looking for in the expansion is an opportunity to upgrade in what we have in the area. We think what we do adds to vibrancy and energy. It's an opportunity to continue to, with the excellent redevelopment that's going on in the area. I think it's a reasonable request, it's an appropriate location, just expand that district out a little bit, and I think will add a lot to the district. So I thank you for your consideration and request.
I might just ask, what, what sorts of things are you thinking about in this area? What, what size or type of sign?
Sure.
Freestanding on, on buildings, on the wall, roof, just kind of in general, to give us a sense of?
Sure.
What this, this change might mean in the short term?
I appreciate, I appreciate the question, and I can only tell you what our immediate plans are. So this is right across the street from the stadium, which is now Eric the Red. We currently have on-premise sign, or off-premise signs there now that are called printed signs that exist today and will continue to exist. Our only plan is, with the reason for the ordinance request, is to be able to convert this to new, new technology, to go to the LED billboards, much like we did on Mayo Square around the Target Center. It's just an upgrading in, in technology. Infrastructure, new columns, the landlord we have there with Eric the Red and State and Partners, they've invested in the building, parking lots, new landscaping. The whole block is being redeveloped, there'll be an affordable housing project going on the backside of this project. We worked with the neighbors to come up with an overall redevelopment plans, we're all investing in that block. You know, it's a real important intersection in the city, especially being right across from the stadium, and we think we're going to really add to what it'll look like. I got one more drawn for you. This is just a rendering of ultimately what it'll look like in relation, that billboard across the street, for instance, is 40 by 50 foot sail, that's a 2,000 square foot screen. Our signs are 10 and a half by 36. So it's not going to look much different than it is now, other than it'll be upgraded to, we'll think the signs will look a lot nicer than what we have there currently.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions of the speaker? And if there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Tom McCarver. I represent Blue Ox Media Group, and in a former life, I had Matt's job. I worked with Clear Channel for 16 years prior, and then a, another outdoor advertising company nationally for four years. So I've been dealing with a lot of these issues with Steve and others for the last 20 or so years, so I've, I've seen a lot of these iterations, and we are also in support, as Clear Channel is, of an expansion here. We're coming at this a little differently because we are a small company, three people, so we don't have a vast array of signs that we're looking to convert. We're looking at things like wall signs that normally in this market, when you see signs, you're going to see things on superstructures and so on, but in many markets, they put out banners and things of that nature that just affix to a wall or hide some relatively unesthetic portions to things, and the one that comes to mind is something like the Energy Center that, that sits right across from the stadium. So we can make use of those types of spaces, and we're a niche business, we, we take a look at things like that and say, here's what it is today, what can we make it tomorrow, without having to put in massive structures and things of that nature. So things that we would be looking at are not ground-based, these are making use of the space that currently exists. During the committee of the whole, we also were looking at an ordinance that was a little more robust than this, talking about Washington Avenue and parts of Hennepin. So we would encourage that discussion to continue today and, and moving forward to Z and P as well. That's something that seems to be supported by the people in the, in the area and council members. So another area where a few wall signs here and there could go up on large brick walls, and again, wall signs by their nature in many ways are somewhat temporary. So one goes up, one comes down, because some of these buildings that come up, apartment buildings that are six stories tall block of wall that for years was open. So there is some more motion than that, and that's why we are better suited to sell something like that, because it requires a one-off sale. You go one by one as opposed to packaging locations. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or?
All right. Are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and commissioner is obviously just the one application before us, the text amendment. Is there any further discussion? Would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
I'm, I'm happy to start us off with a motion and then explain. I would move to approve staff recommendation in terms of approving amendments to section 544.120, as written, which relates to the city financing of billboard advertising, and to, not to approve amendments to section 544.90 related to expansion of the billboard district.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and I should just check with staff, is, is that appropriate for us to make some changes to this text amendment as it goes through the process? for us to make some changes to this text amendment as it goes through the process?
Certainly within the Commissioner's ability to have that discretion.
All right. So the motion is to make the change related to the city financing of billboards and to not change the geography of the downtown entertainment billboard district. Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this motion. I still feel to see the public benefit of adding billboards in the downtown, and the rendering certainly didn't sway my opinion. It's not like we're seeing a new proposal for Minneapolis' version of Shibuya Station. I mean, we're seeing just boxes, box-shaped signage plunked on a site. I mean, and sadly, I have to think of this in terms of what the worst-case scenario would be, and we're not, well, I'm not opposed to an entertainment district and lighting and, you know, like, you know, making it more vibrant and whatever. This isn't adding that. This isn't some new building type that incorporates, that is a skin in this area, which might be appropriate. It's just adding more space for billboards to be plunked down in parking lots or on top of buildings or, it's not, it's not, it's not an attribute or a feature to be added to downtown. I don't really know what it's adding a lot to the district of, except commercial money to a few private entities that are lucky enough to get stuff plunked on the side of their building that the rest of us have to drive by. So I feel to see any public benefit. Therefore, I will be supporting this motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
You know, just to echo Commissioner Lupe here, this part of downtown is really evolving. It's, it's evolving, and there's been a lot of investment, public and private, in housing and office space and, and retail and the park. And, you know, this is, our, our city goals are to grow the population and to have people living downtown, and yes, the Commons Park is a destination park, but it is also serves the neighborhoods there. Since we saw this at Committee the Hole, I took the time to go out into the Commons and up and down Hennepin as well, which is not, not included here, both during the day and at night. And, you know, I think that the experience in those areas would really be, be hurt by having, having a lot of billboards. And I think that any financial return the city gets from those billboards would be, you know, would be sort of counterbalanced in a bad way by, by the disincentive to go to these areas. And, you know, I think I'm also sensitive to this issue because we recently had a case where we had a billboard with a long-term lease, and we were put in a position where we either had to allow for, if I consider to be a fairly significant variance, or have various government entities pay just compensation. And that's because of long-term lease and the nature of these agreements. And, you know, the planning commission voted to mitigate that, and the council, for, for, you know, understandable reasons, decided they didn't want to have to pay for litigation. And so we ended up allowing that to go forward. But I think that's the kind of example that we are facing here, where, you know, this isn't for a moment in time, this really impacts our ability to, to develop this part of our city for, you know, a fair price, and, and we do have housing going up right next to these billboards. I mean, it was just pointed out, there's affordable housing going up right next to the existing billboards, and I, I don't think I'd want to look out on the billboards. And I know they're facing the other way, but, you know, the light's definitely going to be coming around. So that's all I got.
All right. Commissioner Magrino.
I would agree with the previous two Commissioners, and then also add, in particular, in this area, adding another set of digital billboards potentially, where there already is the big giant Viking ship right there, is potentially something that would be distracting to drivers and a safety hazard, especially considering how many people are kind of navigating this area, potentially not often, and maybe they're in town for a Vikings game, and there's a whole bunch of video advertising playing on the street, and there's people walking around after a football game, and just seems like potentially a safety hazard to, to be adding those here in this specific area.
All right. Any further discussion? I'll just add, I, I am somewhat intrigued by the idea of looking at different types of off-premise advertising in this general area, you know. For instance, some of the advertising that exists on the parking garage and the stadium itself, while those facilities are exempt, you know, can in some ways add to the vibrancy of an area, add to kind of that temporary vibrancy where we have blank walls where, you know, years ago, it wasn't envisioned that this would be a particularly vibrant or residential part of the city. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to considering some of those changes. I do have some bigger concerns if we're really opening up the door on freestanding or roof-mounted billboards in an area like this. I think, you know, we've seen a huge number of development proposals within blocks of here within the last five years or so, and I, you know, hope that will continue. And I do think if we're adding a lot of really large, kind of permanently mounted billboards, that can almost be a barrier to new development in, in an area where I, I think all of our policies suggest that we'd like to see it. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the law.
Did I just clarify?
Commissioner Rieland, go ahead.
What word?
The "I" vote is for both an approval and denial.
That, that is correct. Why, why don't I just restate the motion so everyone is clear on that? That is to approve the text amendment as it relates to city financing of billboards, but to not make any changes to the boundaries of the downtown entertainment billboard district. So clerk, please call the law.
Bender.
Hi.
Lupe here.
Hi.
Magrino.
Hi.
Rockwell.
Hi.
Slack.
Hi.
Rieland.
Hi.
So that's 6-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item nine. Our last item for discussion is item 10, another text amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Crandall, Senior City Planner with CPAD Land Use. Before you, tonight, is a proposed zoning code text amendment introduced by Councilmember Bender that explicitly deals with exterior building material standards captured under the Site Plan Review Chapter of the zoning code. What I'm going to do is just provide a little bit of the context around how this amendment came to be, go into a brief account of some of the details. I know this has been discussed a couple of different times at the Committee of the Hole, so I think Commission is largely familiar with the contours of the amendment, and then I'll take any questions. So this amendment is growing out of a period of significant growth and development in the city. We've seen over $1 billion, $1 billion in permits issued in the last five years. This represents a significant investment in the city's public, public realm and built environment, and part of the effort behind this is to ensure that that investment is a lasting one and a quality one. The other context for this, and part of the reason for that significant growth and development, is some significant zone deregulation that's occurred over the last five to 10 years, including notably eliminating conditional use permits for multiple-family dwellings, a residential density text amendment that eliminated the density requirements for higher intensity residential districts in the zoning code, parking policy reform that occurred in 2015 that eliminated parking requirements for certain developments within close proximity to high-frequency transit. And then, of course, ongoing project allowances in terms of conditional use permits for height, variances to FAR and yard requirements on a project-by-project basis that results in significant increases in project density and intensity on a case-by-case basis. A lot of the development that's occurred in that period of significant growth has been in the multifamily development sector, which we are all familiar with in terms of the number of projects that come before us. And as a result of that, a few years ago, the city developed the following guidelines regarding exterior materials in order to guide the design and implementation of a lot of those multifamily buildings and other new additions to Minneapolis' built environment with regard to exterior materials. And this is growing out of a provision that exists in the Site Plan Review Chapter today, dealing with material durability and compatibility with existing building stock in Minneapolis, as well as some adopted policy in the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan. Since that time, staff has had significant experience implementing these guidelines on a project-by-project basis, as has the planning commission, and our knowledge about exterior materials and their implementation in Minneapolis continues to grow, as do the architectural technologies around exterior building materials. There's been significant advancement in a lot of areas of this marketplace in this regard, and we've had some time to observe some of those new technologies and materials out in the built environment and in the city of Minneapolis, including some notable concerns and failures around some building materials that have been implemented within the last 10 to 20 years, so relatively new projects. I won't go into detail about that unless there are specific questions about it, but what I will say is that we have, as a result of the effort behind this text amendment, conducted a significant amount of research and outreach around exterior building material technology, design, implementation. We've conducted several meetings with industry experts, materials manufacturers, members of the affordable housing community, members of the architectural and design community, and have kind of developed this evaluation criteria for how we measure material quality and compatibility as a part of the zoning code text amendment. One being material composition, what is the material made of, obviously an important component in evaluating the quality and appropriateness of any material. Application methods, so how is the material typically applied to the building? Material thickness and density, there's a great variety of different product thicknesses and densities available in particular sectors of this market, notably fiber cement. And then appearance and compatibility, so how does the building material look? How compatible is it with historic building infrastructure in the city and with adjacent properties? There's a lot of language in the Comprehensive Plan and adopted small-area plans dealing with that particular issue. As a result of that, we've, we've landed at a material classification system that separates materials into three different classes, class one, two, and three. So class one being the highest quality, class three being the lowest or most restrictive. Notable changes in terms of how this classification differs from the one that we've been using for the last few years are that we basically separate materials by category rather than applying specific percentages to each one. We have also identified particular differences within categories that were previously just one category. So metal panel, for example, has been broken down into some more specific classifications, as has fiber cement. And then this classification is proposed to be applied based on a calculation of the area of particular building elevations. This is similar to how we apply the current guidelines. We've had some additional breakdown of that application based on feedback that we received from our architectural and affordable housing partners, that we allow for different percentages of different classes at different scales, given that there are some economies of scale built in. And this was based particularly on a comment from the affordable housing community, that they have some economies of scale that become available to them at larger scales that allow them to implement a higher percentage of the higher-quality building materials. So I won't walk through the specific percentages, although if there are questions, I'm happy to answer that. Suffice it to say that we should note at the bottom that class three materials are under, in no case allowed to exceed 30% of any building elevation. And lastly, an important caveat and component of the Site Plan Review Chapter is the alternative compliance function, which the Planning Commission is very familiar with, but I will outline for the benefit of others, that the Planning Commission or zoning administrator may approve alternatives to these standards that meet a condition spelled out in this chapter, that the alternative either meets the intent of the chapter and provides amenities or improvements that address any adverse effects of the alternative, or provides some evidence that strict adherence to the requirements is impractical, or that the proposed alternative is consistent with applicable development plans, development objectives, adopted by the city council. So I will conclude my presentation there and take any specific questions before we move on.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, hi, Peter. I just had two quick questions. One was under the residential uses, under, under those windows and active functions. It states that 20% of walls on the first floor and 10% of walls on each floor above the first that face a public street, et cetera, et cetera, have to windows. What about sides of the building that don't face a public street, public sidewalk, public pathway, or outside parking lot? Do we have a percentage requirement for there? I know that in the past, there has been, at least for single-family homes. Is there a standard for that, or can people do the suburban thing and not put any windows on the sides?
Mr. Wittenberg, did you have a...
I can, I can respond to that. Commissioner Lupe here, the, I should note that that, those provisions are simply a reformatting of the existing ordinance, so that proposal doesn't change the way we would regulate multifamily development, but it is the case that in multifamily mixed-use or commercial development, windows are only required when facing those types of public realm, the public streets, public pathways, or sidewalks. Beyond that, it's the blank wall provisions that apply, limiting blank walls to no more than 25.
And does this create a loophole for one-to-four unit development, since it doesn't state that it's for multifamily?
There's an entirely different section of Site Plan Review that governs...
So it doesn't negate that.
...governs one-to-four units, so you're correct, it does not negate that.
Great. That was my, my one concern there, and the only other question I had was just in regards to, let's see, would be, oh, it's under roof lines. The form and pitch of roof lines should be similar to surrounding buildings. I just wanted to know if there's any levity within the staff to address, obviously, a commercial building going near houses, shouldn't necessarily have to have a pitched roof. You know, I mean, I would assume there's some sort of give-and-take for that, rather than just the strict legislative interpretation in those instances.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the provisions of the Site Plan Review Chapter that gets granted alternative compliance quite a bit, I think.
Great.
Based on staff interpretation of context and use, and obviously the Planning Commission's own purview over that, so.
And that's...
And I should say, that's not changing from the current guidance.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as the author, I just wanted to note that I appreciate staff's careful and really detailed work on this. One of the reasons that we're bringing this forward as an ordinance change is because since early in this council term, we've had an advisory materials palette that we use, but this, the intention of this is really to codify that and to make sure that we are applying our standards equally across the city. I think before we even had those advisory materials guidelines, a lot of things were happening sort of project-by-project, and that really creates a lot of unpredictability. And also, it results in different standards being applied to different parts of the city. So we may have neighborhoods where very high-capacity neighborhood organizations or neighbors who are attorneys and architects, like the folks we heard from earlier today, are able to negotiate much more, you know, higher-quality materials than in other neighborhoods. to negotiate much more, you know, higher-quality materials than in other neighborhoods. And so, anyway, that's a little bit on the intention. I wanted to ask you a question about the kind of balance that we're seeking here with supporting affordability of housing. We've made a lot of changes in this planning commission and council term that really work to support more affordable housing, more flexibility. We've reformed the zoning code in many ways to make it easier to build more affordable small-scale projects in neighborhoods across the city. And I know we took extra care in this particular update to make sure we weren't creating any barriers to affordable housing. So could you speak specifically, generally, to that topic? And then, will there be an ability for projects to seek alternative compliance to these regulations if they're adopted?
Yeah, specifically with regard to the affordability issue, we did meet with several members of the affordable housing community, and the development community specifically, who expressed, as you mentioned, some significant concerns over implementing increasingly restrictive guidance about things that would potentially increase costs to projects. And we responded to that by creating additional flexibility into this proposed ordinance. There was, as you'll recall, a much stricter original proposal that would have required a higher percentage of what, under this, would be considered class-one materials that received some significant pushback from those partners. And we were vigilant to incorporate that into our thinking and made changes subsequently. With regard to the alternative compliance measure, yes, the planning commission can consider any number of factors when they are granting that particular allowance, as long as they fall under the general kind of guidance laid out in the site plan review chapter.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I just want to touch on that a little bit, because I'm really, obviously, concerned about affordable housing in our city, and not only the quantity, which we all know we need more of it, but also the quality. And I think that this current proposal has struck a really good balance. I think that there are options, especially when we kind of negotiated with a lot of developers about how could we make this something that's not creating a barrier to affordable housing and having it be scaled to different sizes of development, but also taking into consideration the variance ordinances and policy changes over the last few years that have actually helped reduce costs to development. So I think that that gets balanced with the desire to see quality construction regardless of whether it's affordable or not. And I think that the concern that I know I had initially with some of the questions put forth was that we're, that we take care not to create a substandard group of housing just because people do not have the means of which to invest in higher quality. So I think that this has prevented that stratification from taking place, where all of a sudden areas of the city that are more affordable housing than others might be inundated with a number of housing units that are not held to the same standard as other developments around the city. So I think that this is a really good balance in that, in that it keeps affordable housing possible, while at the same time, holding it to the same high standards of other communities so we're not holding neighborhoods down. So I applaud, actually, this is a really good compromise to that really difficult problem.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? If there are none, I will remember to open the public hearing this time. And so the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Yes, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and distinguished council members. My name is Marcus Keisinger, and I represent James Hardy Building Products out of Chicago, Illinois. James Hardy, if you, if you're not aware, manufactures fiber cement cladding, which is the subject of one of the material restrictions in the proposal. James Hardy has been making fiber cement in the United States for over 25 years. We've manufactured close to 18 billion square feet of material that's found on commercial buildings and residential buildings all across the U.S. Minnesota is a, is a early adopter of fiber cement, in the sense that it's, I think it's still being, finding its niche in, within Minnesota and Minneapolis specifically. So James Hardy's been following this proposed ordinance for some time now, because there were some restrictions on its use back even when it was in the form of a guideline. Our material could not be used more than 30% on any of the, on the exterior for any of the elevations. And so when we learned that the planning department was going to update the ordinance with new information, we took that as an opportunity to provide some industry experience and expertise on the material, fiber cement specifically. And we tried to do that as a neutral party. We weren't advocating for Hardy specifically. As I think Mr. Crandall will attest, when we met with the planning department, we also talked about other fiber cement materials, not just our own, and how those would fit in. So what we saw was a fair and level playing field with respect to evaluating fiber cement materials. And unfortunately, when we saw the latest version of this, we thought the standard was anything but that. We thought the selection and demarcation of fiber cement materials based on thickness and density was arbitrarily chosen. It's based on factual errors, as set forth in the supporting documentation, and it has a bias against James Hardy products specifically. And ultimately, if the intent of the regulation was to provide clarity around quality and durability, it falls short. So what do I mean, I mean about arbitrary standards? So let's talk specifically about the density and thickness components. I don't know if we can flip back to that on the screen or not. I don't have control.
I think, I think, yeah, Peter could...
Thank you. Thanks very much. Actually, the class-one standard, sorry. Yes, there we go. So as you may be able to see, it's fine print. Class-one is demarcated by having a material thickness of greater than 5/8 of an inch. And again, sensibly, class-one, the reason this is there is that it's a defining characteristic of durability. Well, logically and scientifically, thickness has no relation to durability. There are thin materials that are durable, and there are thick materials that are durable. The other aspect of thickness that was proposed, or stated in the proposed ordinance, was that thicker materials tend to be used upon rain screens more often, and that's not true. There are, there are thick materials that are, there are also thin materials that are used on rain screens. Rain screen is a, is a function of a building practice that is, we actually like, we specify in our applications that are highly exposed to be placed on top of rain screens. However, we're not 5/8 of an inch thick. So thickness really has no bearing on use of a rain screen or not. And that is one of the factual errors that underlie, we believe, the thickness specification. The other arbitrary dimension is density. So density also has no relationship to durability. There are some products that are dense that are durable, and there are also low-density products that are durable. In fact, one of the products on one of the buildings here in Minneapolis, the apartment building at 800 North Third Street is a, has a density well below 1.75, I believe. It's about 1.25. And but for the thickness requirement, it would not qualify. So here you have a, what appears to be an arbitrary selection of factors, of attributes, that are used to justify fiber cement as class-one. Excuse me if my voice is cracking. I need some water. So, anyway, the standard, but for the, but for the, but for that thickness requirement, that material that's on 800 North Third Street would not qualify for class-one, and it's already been approved by the planning department. So what is a level playing field? I stated what's wrong. What is right? What's right, and what we've advocated to the planning department, is the industry-accepted standard for fiber cement, which is ASTM C1186 type A, which is for exterior products, grade-two or better. In the standard, which is a comprehensive material standard, it addresses not, while thickness, and it has standards around thickness and density, what it has are performance tests. How does the material perform in freeze-thaw conditions? How does the material perform in wetting and drying conditions over time? And on tests that are accepted by the industry, and not just manufacturing industry. ASTM, as you may know, is a, is a consensus standard that incorporates not only manufacturers, but academics, professionals, architects, other interested parties, government officials as well. So what we have advocated is the option, replacing those thickness requirements and density requirements with ASTM 1186 type A, grade-two. That would be our proposal. And we think that would give a level playing field for all fiber cement manufacturers. They have to meet that requirement. Now, there's some that don't. Those are, and the ones that don't are considered to be type B. They're only suitable for interior products. For example, our Hardybacker product, which is used under tile, is a type-B product and not suitable for external environments, exterior environments. So the other, the other aspect of, I'd just like to touch on, with respect to how adopting the standard would, by allowing our products, it would address the affordability aspect of what the, the planning department is seeking to promote. So, and what I mean by that is, as currently written, the standard would favor very expensive imported fiber cement products. James Hardy makes its fiber cement in the U.S. And as far as an option of fiber cement, it's very durable. We all, we meet the same standard as the, as the imported products under this ASTM standard. And we are, with 25 years of experience across the nation, very durable and proven to be durable. The other aspect I'd like to touch on is how Hardy products fit the criteria that have been established. So, so material composition. The rationale behind the, the rationale behind the proposed standards are around material composition. Specifically, the planning department has called out the use of proven and natural materials. For example, Portland cement, James Hardy products are made out of 90% Portland cement and sand or quartz, with a cellulose fiber reinforcement that allows it to be tough and flexible, and can be used with standard woodworking tools that are used to install other things. So one of our attributes that we have over higher-density materials is that you can work our products more easily and install them at less cost. So that's one of our attributes that we, that we promote. In terms of application, we already touched on rain screen. Our products are actually specified to be on rain screen in the most exposed applications. Density and thickness, we've already discussed. And then appearance, the planning department has mentioned that prefinished materials should be class-one because of the lower maintenance. A factory-applied finish can be applied under controlled conditions, it's not subject to the vagaries of the environment when you're painting it. And indeed, those materials are usually warranted longer as our arts. So what we would propose is, yes, class-one should be prefinished, and we may, we've been making prefinished fiber cement since 2002. That's really all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said, the density of that 800 North Third Street project, that you said that there's...
It's around 1.25, both plus or minus.
And then you were...
0.05.
...advocating for the, the class-one requirement to be changed to ASTM 1186 type A, grade-two or better. How does your product compete, grade-one versus grade-two? I mean, would you say? I mean, what makes grade-two the level you would, other than that your product's in it?
Okay, fair enough. It's related, so the grading in that standard is related more to bending strength, how the lower grades are weaker in bending strength, and that doesn't impact durability as much as it impacts fastening schedules. So how many fasteners do you have to have between spans, and how much of a span between framing members can you have with your panel? So we are class-two. There are others that are, that are lower, but...
And then you mentioned rain screen, which I, which I think is really awesome. And you say that yours is, the specification calls for it to be applied in, in certain situations. But I'm wondering if, are you suggesting that perhaps they have a performance criteria in class-one, where 5% fortified on a rain stream would be considered a class-one, regardless of density or thickness? Or would you still say that the thickness and density have to be adjusted as, I mean, if there was no rain screen? I mean, would you see that as a compromise, or would you say that that negates the point of your testimony?
If I understand your question, I don't think it's a trade-off between rain screen and thickness and density. The rain screen is a, is a building practice that's used to manage moisture. And it's, it's often relegated to building code. So it'd be, you know, the building code might require the rain screen. We require rain screen in areas that are highly exposed. I mean, it's highly exposed, there's maybe no overhang, you know, a sopit on a building that would, you know, further protect the material. So when it's basically a blank wall with, with no overhang, that's where we would require a rain screen. And also, when you're above a certain height, because of the propensity of taller buildings to be, higher floors to be more susceptible to water intrusion.
Right. But given it's a concrete product, and it's susceptible to capillary action, and then just the spalling of the paint, would you think that your product, if it didn't meet the class-one requirements, being allowed to meet it if the architect designed it to be installed on a rain screen, would you say that that would be a good balance? Because I think we're looking at how it performs over time, and whether or not it becomes a maintenance issue, and whether certain things are getting maintained, and the overall maintenance and appearance and quality of the city. So the question is, if your product were applied, regardless of whether it's a high-impact area, or just, you know, in the front of a commercial building that's two stories tall, that has a really nice cute awning or something, do you think that that would meet, make you guys happy? I mean, I'm just wondering if that would still meet the criteria, because then technically, your product could be allowed under the class-one with that performance criteria.
If it were installed on a rain screen, it would certainly, we think it would be fine without it. In fact, there's, there's certainly many instances around the country where it has been installed without a rain screen, and it's performing just fine. So it is, in terms of building longevity, a rain, no, a rain screen in this type of environment is better than none. So...
Thank you.
All right. So are there any other questions of the speaker? Seeing none, we can move on to any other speakers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this slide?
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. No one else? If there's no one, I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, Commissioner Reland?
Yes, of staff's expertise, which is probably better than my own. You've been asked this question and looked at it, and again, we're, we're interested in getting the right products in the right places for the reasons that we all agree on. What consideration to the testimony? How does that fit with our criteria? And is there a hybrid, or is there something that makes sense to address those concerns that were raised?
So I would maybe speak to a couple of the items that got brought up by the speaker, and I think that that might get to your question. In terms of the evaluation criteria, we, as staff, consider all of these things together in determining where a material falls on the classification. So it's not just the thickness, it's not just the density, it's not just the application. It's kind of, we had to submerge ourselves in the industry in a bit and learn about what different product manufacturers require and implement on various available systems, and developed the, about the criteria for classification based on that knowledge. So, for example, the 5/8-inch dimension, the primary manufacturer of 5/8-inch fiber cement requires that their product be implemented with a rain-screen system, and that system is integrated with the delivery of the product itself. It's a backfastened system, so there are no actual punctures through the material from the front of the building, which could potentially further compromise that material to moisture infiltration or installer error. The 7/16-inch fiber cement panel refers specifically to a product that James Hardy manufactures. They manufacture a 17/16-inch fiber cement that is also required to be installed with a rain screen and comes with an integrated facade attachment system, thus eliminating some of the potential pitfalls that befall fiber cement when it is not appropriately mitigated for moisture. So there's multiple factors kind of going into where each material falls under the classification. And to be frank, we're, we're actually expanding the capacity for fiber cement with this proposal than from where we had been regulating it previously in the 2014. previously in the 2014 guidelines. So on some of these lower-scale residential buildings, we're potentially going to be allowing a greater degree of fiber cement cladding than we have up to this point, or over the last few years, anyway. And we just are trying to make sure that all of these factors get considered in allowing for certain percentages of certain materials on each elevation. So let's kind of...
But so you, you have some performance standards that you're looking at or know about. So the 7/16 material with, with the moisture...
Rain screen, yep.
...mitigation doesn't perform as well as the 5/8s for the rain screen?
So that, yeah, there's several other differences between those two products, mainly being that front fastening system. So most fiber cement products at the lower density or, sorry, lower thickness range are attached to the facade through the front of the, the product. And that's often, you know, sealed and painted, or, you know, there's, there are things you can do to mitigate what potential damage that might cause to the material. But the 5/8s inch is a backfastened system, so it's attached to the facade behind the actual exterior material, which eliminates another potential compromise to that. So that's where that distinction gets, gets drawn. Also, that, that manufacturer, all of their material is prefinished, whereas many of the other fiber cement products are available and prefinished, but also available and unfinished.
So we could add some language about prefinish or not prefinish?
You could add that to the Class II or Class III, but if you feel like.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Lukey here.
So just one quick question. If another manufacturer were able to demonstrate that their product had the same performance criteria as, as ones that we are currently allocating under Class I, would they be allowed to go for alternative compliance using that product?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I should also note that we've added additional language under the, the sort of general design guidance language that calls for all fiber cement where feasible to be applied with rain screen principles.
Any further questions? If there are none, perhaps someone would like to make a motion on this? Commissioner Magrino.
I will make a motion to approve the text amendment as proposed by Staff.
We have a motion and a second to approve the text amendment. Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah. Thanks for your work on this. This is actually something that I was a little bit hesitant about when we were talking about it at committee the whole a couple times, just with an eye towards potentially making some projects be financially unviable. But I think that Staff did leave a lot of wiggle room with the alternative compliance when they were writing the ordinance. I still think it's a little bit silly to require, you know, stone and glass and brick on the back of a building, but I live in Loring Park, and so that's sort of a particular perspective and might not apply in most of the areas of the city. But I think that this is a good step forward, especially considering all of the kind of general loosening of regulations that we've had across the city. And we want to make sure that we are providing a quality-built environment around town.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just wanted to thank Staff so much. This started out again earlier this term, the very beginning, I guess, of 2014, when we started looking at the advisory material guidelines that we have been using over the past almost four years. But then, really, we began this work as an ordinance after we reformed parking a couple of years ago. Several of my colleagues and, and planning commissioners expressed a lot of concern about the quality of buildings in neighborhoods across the city and asked that we do this and potentially look at other things that we're going to be making sure that development across the city is high-quality. And so, anyway, those two things are kind of the factors that drove this into being an ordinance, in addition to, again, our desire to be fair and predictable in neighborhoods throughout Minneapolis. And I hope that we've achieved what we set out to do, which was to balance the different needs of making sure that development is well-built and lasting and high-quality, as well as not providing barriers to affordable housing in our city, which of course is such a high need and that we've all been working on as well. So we didn't want to create any new, new barriers to that. It would have been open to any changes, of course, and I know Staff has been working to get more feedback from planning commissioners and the public and stakeholders and developers. So, you know, I just, there was a lot of back and forth and tweaking of this, and I'm grateful for all of the work that went into it.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please come roll.
Under.
Hi.
Lukey here.
Hi.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Reland.
Aye.
Site Zero.
All right. And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 10. Also concludes our business for today. We have committee of the whole tomorrow. We're adjourned.